We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, October 16th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us bow to the created maker of all mankind. Father, here we are once more again standing before you asking for your guidance, but most of all asking for your protection. We also pray for our brothers and sisters in the panhandle for Hurricane Michael for what they went through, grant them peace, but most of all continue to give them safety and let them know that you are still in control. We pray also for one of our members who will be leaving tonight, Commissioner Casello. Will you grant him what he would need up in Tallahassee, but most of all give him wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Cabs.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
And Commissioner Joe Casello.
Present.
All present.
All right. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to informational items by members of the city commission. Commissioner Cabs, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner McCray?
Sure. Hold on. It appeared. I went to the mandatory ethics training for four hours. I attended, I met with Bonnie Miskel and the young man that was with her today, he wasn't young, but I met with him, I can't think of his name, but really on a serious note. I went to the INCA meeting last night and I wanted to say to the Marine Patrol here in Boynton, we had the Florida FWCA, whatever that initial was, and then we had the Sheriff Department, and they came in and they told our citizens of INCA the same thing that the Marine Patrol here in Boynton told them. You know, and it's kind of funny to me that you have to get an outsider to come in to say what was already said for somebody to believe it. I'd like to say to Chief Gregory and to the Marine Patrol, I thank you for your pamphlet. These words left with the INCA members last night. Job well done, continue to keep doing what you all are doing. I'm one of your greatest supporters and I will remain one of your greatest supporters until you make me mad. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I have nothing to disclose. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Casello, last opportunity.
No disclosures, Mayor, thank you.
All right. For myself, on October 3rd, I attended Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency's Steering Committee, and that evening I was at Dew South for On the Road for Climate Action. It was amazing that we had, I forget their name, come by to Dew South and promote their book, 50 Myths About Climate Change and the science behind it, to debunk the myth that volcanoes are causing the earth warming and many other things that were there. On the 4th, I attended the BDB Luncheon and the National Day of Taiwan. On the 6th, I did a event for the American Stroke Association called Strokes for Stroke, where we got to paint a heart. On the 8th, I had an elementary summit, and this is something I'll talk about on future agenda items with the commission. On the 9th, I attended the ethics course with Commissioner McCray and was at the International College of Health Sciences in Boynton Beach to help with their accreditation of their nursing program. On the 10th, I went to the Special Needs Advisory Council Award Ceremony, and we did have a winner here in Boynton Beach, which I'll talk about later. The 15th, I had a principal summit with Congress Middle School. I also attended INCA and the Historical Society, and today I met with Bonnie Miskel and Corporate Property Services. Is there any further announcements to make?
I have one. Commissioner Casello, will you be saying a farewell speech? Because if you will, I will say my comments after your farewell speech.
Oh, I appreciate that. I will say a few parting words. Thank you.
All right. And now it is your opportunity, because we have the presentation of plaque of recognition of Joe Casello as Commissioner for District 4. So the stand-ups are...
We're going to take a picture now. You know how it is. Slow down. Mayor, if you'd indulge me, just for a couple of, just a short remark, a couple of short remarks. First of all, I'm humbled and I'm honored to have the privilege, to have had the privilege to serve up here for six years, 2013 to this day here. And I feel good in a sense that I'm leaving on the note that I'm leaving on, a high note, if you will. I got into this elected position for the right reason. When I came here and ran in 2013, Boynton Beach had much going on, and not all of it was good. We had a mayor at that time who was indicted, we had a couple of commissioners leave under different circumstances, we had some officers that were in trouble with their law themselves. And when I decided to run, I was virtually unknown. And being, having a firefighting background, the only people that I knew that might, you know, be on my side for my endeavor was the firefighters, and I knocked on firehouse doors. And finally got to the right people, and I got support, and it's well documented that I won my first election by three votes. That's the same score that the Patriots won Sunday night. But a lot has happened in the last six years, and I see a lot of you out there that were part of that. You know, I believe it's probably close to a half a billion dollars' worth of new development here in Boynton Beach. We have a new Phoenix going to be rising out of the rubble over there where the old City Hall and Police Department, Fire Department was. The population has increased. In fact, this year the census came out and Boynton Beach was the highest, had the highest percentage of new people moving in. It just shows you that we might be doing some things right up here that people want to come live and play here in Boynton Beach. You know, I've taken some tough votes up here, and I'm not always saying that they were the right votes, but they came from the heart. And one of my first votes that I ever took was the old high school. It had been in disrepair, most of you know the story, for 20-plus years. And my position at that time was, I made a statement, and I've been very careful for my statements ever since, that I said it was just a bunch of two-by-fours, nails and mortar. And the pushback I got on that statement was tremendous. I found that it's more than that, it was part of Boynton's history, and people had a real connection with that. And one of the things I'm probably most proud of is that I listened to the people who this particular project was important to, and they convinced me that it had to stay for the reasons, for those reasons. And we did it. And now we can see what's going to be happening over there, and I'm proud to be had part of that vote, to see the new city square, new downtown. And I look forward to the day when Boynton can be completely diversified without districts, but just one Boynton Beach, and where all citizens can enjoy the fruits of our success up here. I'd like to thank the staff. It's made my job so much easier. I look out there, you know, we don't know everything up here, I can guarantee you that. And it's just, people are a phone call away, and will go out of their ways to give you direction and information that you need to make informed decisions. And the staff, you know who you are, there's many out there, I thank you for that. Colin, you are an amazing individual. This man, he's in everything. He's, I don't know how you do it, but I want to thank you for all your hard work. And to my city manager, you know, we just left a closed-door session, and you know, you can get contentious when you close those doors there and all, but we come out as one. And that's the most important thing, to be able to work with your colleagues up here. And we've had some, you know, Mac and I, and I don't want to put a label on you, Mac, but Mac and I are dinosaurs. You know, as you can see, these youngsters up here, I call them youngsters, you know, half our age up here, they're bright, they're progressive, and these are the future leaders of this city here in our future. My seat will be taken by whoever, whoever he or she is, and I would, they're going to be in a very good place to be able to work with these colleagues up here. These are good people, they made some sound decisions, and moving our city forward. City Manager, personally? I don't want to get emotional, but I will. You know, my wife's out there in the audience, and for six years I've been coming home from these meetings, and she'll be sitting there and she say, "So how'd it go?" And she usually knew by just the look on my face, I would win, you know? I'm the type of guy that, you know, everyone likes to get their way and always thinks their ideas and that, but one thing I did learn, and I'll leave you with this, is that it's not your solution to the problem that's the best, it's a partnership. And if you don't work together up here on those issues, nothing will ever have ever got done. And so I'm proud to be able to say that I've learned how to work within the group to getting the things done that need to get done here. I feel like I'm leaving here tonight and leaving Boynton Beach in a better place than when I first came here, and I think that's all you can ask when you run for an elected office. In my time in Tallahassee, I won't be far, I know where my roots are, right here in Boynton Beach, and we'll be working very hard up there for the Boynton Beach, City of Boynton Beach, up there in Tallahassee. So I thank all of you, you know who you are out there, I see the former Mayor Taylor, one of my first mentors up here, Jerry, thank you so much for your service to the city. Just again, not to be rambling, thank you so much.
We have a special little gift for you, something you've mentioned many, many a time, and we do listen, and I think you'll enjoy it. His own Yeti, finally. A Boynton Beach Yeti, yeah.
There's a story, little story behind, behind this Yeti, as you can see, the city manager has one, and every time we'd go in to have our meetings, our weekly meetings, it'd be on her desk, and I'd say, "Ah, man, I want one of those, I want one of those." A few times I tried to walk out of her office with hers, but it never was successful. So here, I thank you, I will treasure this for the rest of my career. Thank you so much.
You know how hard it was to get that away from Eleanor?
I can only imagine. So thank you all, thank you.
Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
Yeah, let me go ahead and start since I'm one of the seniors up here. One thing, Commissioner Casello, you said that I'd like to correct, and you said that we don't know everything up here, you spoke for yourself. But on a serious note, sir, we all learned this road together. It was difficult, it was hard, we did not see eye to eye all the time, but just like you said, when we walked out, we walked out here still being friends, and that's the main thing about, you know, city government, sometime we think about, you know, is it worth it? Is it rewarding? Yes, it is. I wish you the best of luck when you're in Tallahassee, and I don't know where my roads are going to end, but just in case you see somebody up there at a desk that looks like me, bet your bottom dollar, it will be me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Good luck, sir.
And so as for myself, I remember the first time I met you, I was at the Financial Advisory Committee when you were running for office, and you were there with your pad and paper, just taking notes, taking it all in, and learning as much as you could for the position that you're about, that you won. I can figure, feel that you have done your absolute best to become the state representative, and now you will be representing not only Boynton Beach, but all 413 municipalities and unincorporated areas, and doing the best to make, moving Florida into the right direction from now on. We look forward to seeing you in Tallahassee, and you know, that's the other fun part, is we know where you live, so when you come back, we'll be here waiting for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, Commissioner Cabs?
Yeah, also not to get emotional, because Joe has not only been a coworker, you know, in this position, but a valued friend, and I look forward to our continued friendship and working relationship in his new capacity. I met Joe at the diner on Gateway about five years ago when I was running for school board. He informed me that he had endorsed my opponent in that race. But in that meeting, in that conversation, there's a lot to be said about honesty and respect for people and telling people the truth, even if you don't know them, even if you could lie or deceive people and get away with it, you know? He showed his character in the first time that I sat down with him, and that character has not changed through the past five years that I've known him, and I definitely, again, appreciate his friendship, his professionalism. We, we come from similar backgrounds, we're both from the Northeast, we're both from working-class union families.
Both love Wawa.
We do both love Wawa. So, so we agreed on most things up here, it was just natural, we had similar viewpoints, and that made it very, very convenient to have a strong ally. And even when we disagreed on some topics, whether it were red light cameras, or it's really only one of the few issues we disagreed on, it, you can't take this stuff personal and you can't make this stuff personal, otherwise you won't get stuff done. This collection of five people up here, Commissioner Casello included, have very different viewpoints, and, and I think that it's, it's a testament to the teamwork that he's contributed to, and we've all contributed to, that from meeting to meeting, you don't see steady blocks of, you know, three or four people dominating vote after vote, it sways back and forth, and we agree and disagree, and, and for that reason, I think we've been effective at getting a lot of stuff done in a wide range of activities, not just the downtown, but addressing budgetary issues, you know, working on contracts for our, our public employees, addressing the heart of Boynton. I think that, you know, it's, it's a good team, it's a shame to lose Joe, whoever comes up here is going to have a difficult job filling that seat. But again, it's, it's been a pleasure to, to work with him, and I, I know that I'll be working with him in his new capacity as legislature, legislator, not just here as a Boynton Beach Commissioner, but also my role of representing teachers. So, you know, with that, again, I'll, I'll miss him up here, but I know that I'll, I'll stay in touch and I'll be working with him every day, so it's sad, but it's not a loss. So, thank you again, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll keep it brief. Joe, go forward and make us proud.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to announcements. We will proclaim the month of October as Walk to End Alzheimer's Month. Shanitria Moore, who is the West Palm Beach Walk to End Alzheimer co-chair, will accept the proclamation from Mayor Grant. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas over 5.7 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's disease, including in this number are an estimated 540,000 individuals in the state of Florida, of which an estimated 47,000 reside in Palm Beach County. And whereas every 66 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's disease. And whereas, and in 2008, in the United States, 16.1 million caregivers provided an estimated 18.4 billion hours of unpaid care valued at more than $232 billion. In Florida, over 1.1 million caregivers provided over $1 billion hours of unpaid care valued at an estimated $16 billion. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is the most expensive disease in the United States, and in 2018, the direct cost to American society will total an estimated $277 billion. Whereas, the state of Florida and City of Boynton Beach recognize the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association and the annual Walk to End Alzheimer's held this year on Saturday, October 20th, 2018, at Meyer Amphitheater to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and related disorders, thereby improving the quality of human life for those living with Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers. And now therefore I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Walk to End Alzheimer's Month. And I congratulate all participants who have participated in raising awareness in our community through the annual Walk to End Alzheimer's in the City of West Palm Beach on Saturday, October 20th, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor Grant.
Thank you all so much for this opportunity. Thank you again, City of Boynton Beach. This walk is very near and dear to me as I lost my grandmother to Alzheimer's, and if we think about it, it won't take very long for any, any of you guys to think of someone that you know with the disease or who is currently suffering with it. It's the sixth largest disease killer in the United States. One in three seniors will end up having Alzheimer's or some form of dementia. It is, it kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined, just to put it in perspective. So we need the support, we need your help. The walk is this Saturday, it's a fun walk. Pull out your purple t-shirts, wear your purple tutus, and come out and support, and support this fight against Alzheimer's. Thank you again.
Next, we have proclaimed the week...
Excuse me, Commissioner Ramos asked me, did I have a tutu? I said, no, I got a three-three, I don't know.
Next, we have proclaimed the week of October 15th, 19th, 2018, as Poverty Awareness Week in the City of Boynton Beach. Mr. Ontario OJ Johnson will be accepting the proclamation. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas Circles of Palm Beach County, a program of Pathways to Prosperity, is a part of a national movement to end poverty. And whereas Circles of Palm Beach County is promoting Poverty Awareness Week to increase awareness to issues related to low-income families in our community. And whereas, throughout the week, community members will have an opportunity to participate in a variety of activities and commit to challenges that will bring them face-to-face with the barriers that impoverish people in our city experience on a daily basis. And whereas, the challenges include watching films illustrating society's everyday struggle with poverty, eating on $4.50 per day, taking public transportation for an entire day, and participating in a real-life poverty simulation. And whereas Circles of Palm Beach County will convene participants who took the challenge to discuss their experience and encourage individuals to get involved with Circles to fight poverty throughout Palm Beach County. Now therefore I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim October 15th through the 19th, 2018, as Poverty Awareness Week.
First, I want to say thank you to everyone. Can you hear me here?
Okay.
All right. First again, I want to tell you thank you for this time and for the proclamation. I don't know if a lot of you all realize, do you realize that the fallout yearly for what poverty costs this country is $500 billion yearly? So a lot of people don't realize what that looks like and how poverty is truly affecting this country. I am, again, I'm Ontario OJ Johnson, I am the coordinator for a program called Circles of Palm Beach County, and what we are doing is, we are building a community to end poverty. This is an opportunity for you all to get involved, this is an opportunity for you to take all of your experiences, your wisdom, the time that you, that you've been here, the things that you've learned, and put your hand in the pot. It's an opportunity for you to put your hand in the pot and for you all to make a change. You are always welcome here to come over to Pathways to Prosperity here in Boynton and visit a Circles class and see the kind of work that we're doing, see how we're reaching down in the community, and we're working with the less fortunate, and we're giving them the tools, and we're giving them the strategies on how to remove themselves from impoverished situations. Again, you are all welcome to come and see what that looks like. We're fighting poverty, we're on the front lines, and you're welcome to come and join. Thank you.
Mr. OJ. Mr. Johnson. Mr. OJ, hello.
We have some questions.
Okay, since you're talking about P2P and circles, I'm just saying, you know, how many families have you all helped, I'm just saying, since your program has been an exception?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Can you tell us how many families have you all helped to get past this level of poverty so that they will start being sustainable within our communities?
I think we're somewhere around 126 families, I think, total, since what we've been doing. And we're, like I said, our program is constantly and ongoing, and what we're doing is, we need, like I said, we need involvement from the community, because what we're doing, as we're helping these families, we're aligning them with allies, with folks just like you and myself, who've kind of lived a little bit and become an intentional friend to them and to be a support system. No one asking for a handout or anything like that, this is completely a hand-up. This is what it looks like, and it's just to come along and be a friend and be a, a support system when someone just needs someone to, to talk to, to ask a question because of your experiences. That's what it looks like.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next, we have an announcement that the Palm Beach County Property Appraisers Office will be manning a table at the senior center to provide Boynton Beach residents with information on how to file for homestead exemption from 1:30 PM to 2:30 PM on the following dates, Tuesday, November 13th, and Tuesday, December 11th. Next is the announce the change in the date for the regularly scheduled November 6th Commission Meeting to Wednesday, November 7th at 6:30 PM. E, announcement of the 7th Annual Boynton Beach Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash. Do we have someone from the CRA presenting?
Wait a second.
Yes. Can you speak in front of the podium?
The city council?
She's...
And my God, people of Boynton Beach!
In front of the podium, please. The podium.
The podium.
With the microphone. With the microphone.
I'm actually doing this from a horse wheel. Hello, everyone. I'm from 1702, I really don't do these. All right, I am Lord Hyde, the Lord Governor, and I have come to proclaim far and wide, hear ye, hear ye, et cetera, et cetera, that the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Associate Agency invites you to the 7th Annual Boynton Beach Haunted Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash. Come join the fun on Saturday, October 27th, and Sunday, October 28th, as pirates invade downtown Boynton Beach with swashbuckling adventures for the whole family. This free event will feature non-stop entertainment and music, audacious stunt shows, cannons, unique vendors, pirate encampments, live mermaids, kids' activities, costume contests, a treasure hunt, and much, much more. Fill your gut with food and drink from the Grub and Grog Row, including the Pirates Rebellion IPA, a craft beer developed by Dew South Brewing Company especially for the festival. I have a picture of it right here, as a matter of fact. There we are. Isn't that remarkable? They do paint well. And be sure to stop by the Inchedoke Market to pick up some pirate booty. Be sure to dress to impress for the Royal Haunt Wedding, where my daughter, she'll be marrying a handsome prince, taking place half past 1 on Saturday afternoon, and bring your best mates and family to celebrate the pirates' life at the most exciting pirate fest in South Florida. Dig up more information at bbpiratfest.com. Thank you all very much for your attention, and come to the festival! I'll just begin. Oh, I'll just begin for anybody who wants to.
Next, we have an announcement of the 3CMA Award received for the city's 2018 calendar.
Hate to follow that one up. Not nearly as exciting as the pirate, the lord, but I do want to announce, and I'm happy to announce, Eleanor Crussell, Marketing Director, by the way, that this is the third year in a row that the City of Boynton Beach has received a Silver Circle Award, which is second place, from the City-County Communications and Marketing Association in its Savvy Award Competition for its 2018 calendar. The entry was quite extensive, it was a six-page entry that had to include the problem and opportunity statements, intended goals and outcomes, documentation of achievements, budget, and use of... and use of outside resources. The calendars were also judged on creativity, quality of content, design, and production. Over 700 entries were received and judged, and we're proud that we received second place next year first. 3CMA is an association made up of government communication and marketing managers and is throughout the country, so it's a national award.
Next, we have Justin Katz, CTA President, has requested to address the Commission regarding the school district referendum.
Name and address, please.
Three minutes.
Three minutes on the clock.
Thank you for the opportunity. I stand before you, my name is Justin Katz. I am the President of the Palm Beach County Classroom Teachers Association and represent over 13,000 teachers and professionals that support teachers throughout Palm Beach County. And I'm just here to provide you some information about a question that is on the current ballot, if you already have an absentee ballot, and will obviously be on the November ballot if you vote on Election Day, regarding a number of serious issues that would be addressed should this referendum be passed. First and foremost, you can see on the screen the language right there. It says, "Shall the School Board of Palm Beach County have authority to levy one mil of Adlora millage dedicated for operational needs of non-chartered district schools to fund school safety equipment, hire additional school safety police and mental health professionals, fund arts, music, physical education, career and choice program teachers, and improve teacher pay beginning July 1st, 2019, automatically ending June 30th, 2023, with oversight by an independent committee of citizens and experts." So that'll be the question before you on the ballot. Next slide. So to break that down in plain English and describe to you what exactly this referendum will provide for the district. First and foremost, it will continue to fund over 650 existing positions in the academies, career, trade classes, art, P.E., music. In the wake of the recession in 2010, the state legislature cut public education funding by $1 billion. In addition to the reduced property values and reduced local property taxes, the school district was faced with a decision. They asked the voters in 2010 to approve what was a quarter mil at the time to fund these positions. By law, this tax must expire every four years, they can't just pass it and have it exist for 10 or 20 years. So every four years, this tax expires. It was passed by over 60% of the voters in 2010, over 70% of the voters in 2014. Here we are in 2018, faced with the same question but with more challenges that require more resources. Not only do we want to continue to fund these 650 different positions and allow for students to have these options in our public schools, but also, obviously, school security, mental health, and teacher pay have become a critical issue, not just in Palm Beach County or Florida, but across the state if you've paid attention to the news and you've seen the type of action that's been occurring amongst teachers throughout the country. Next slide. So in addition to continuing to fund those 650 positions in the classroom, you have increases for police officers in our schools and mental health personnel. Last year, the legislature passed a law that mandated one officer per school. That wasn't the law before, now you must have at least one officer per school. The legislature provided some funding, but not nearly enough. The school district got something to the tune of $5 or $6 million. They spent $15 million increasing security measures just this year. The problem is with one per school, if you know anything about public schools, an elementary school might have 600 or 700 students, a high school might have 3,500 students. One officer per school in an elementary school versus a high school is a very different scene. With the additional revenue generated from a portion of this referendum, should it pass, the district will hire 77 additional police officers on top of that one per school, which will allow them to put two in every middle school, three in every high school, and also allow these officers to move from school to school if there's a need to beef up security. Problem when you have one per school is you can't ever move them because they have to remain in that school. So in addition to those 650 positions in the classroom, you have 77 new officers being funded. On top of that, because I say this wherever I go, it's nice to have extra officers in the schools, they will prevent something from happening once it's already started. But the goal isn't to stop shootings when they're happening, it's to prevent them from ever originating in the first place, and that's a mental health issue. I don't know, and I cannot fathom, and I don't think most people can, what possibly goes on inside the mind of a child who thinks that murdering other children or adults is an acceptable activity. But that issue can be addressed if identified at an early enough age or even earlier in the school year. And the problem is, right now, you have guidance counselors who, historically, you think of as talking to kids who have issues and being there to listen to them, but they've been relegated mostly in our modern school system to monitoring graduation requirements, making sure test scores are high enough so these students pass what they need to to get on to the next grade. They're not guidance counselors anymore in the traditional sense. We need people who are dedicated to interacting with students to address their mental health concerns. Teachers, similarly, I went to school to become a teacher, I got a degree in secondary education so I could teach high school. I was not trained or prepared to know the difference between a junior or senior in high school who says something weird or odd because they're kids and kids say weird and odd stuff, or a child who says something that might lead to a mass shooting. This would fund 180 new positions in the school district, mostly based in schools, so that there would be mental health professionals on every campus and also have additional ones that can move based on events that occur and traumas and things and beef up mental health at a school. So in addition to the security on the back end of dealing with a shooter or violent episode, we also have even more people who would be brought into the fold that would address these children before it manifests into an actual violent episode. Next slide. And the last component of this referendum is teacher retention supplements. It's a sad state of affairs that in the past decade, the funding for public education has gone from 36th in the country to 44th. Florida has taken its eye off the ball, has stopped funding education as demands increase, somehow less money has been provided. As a result of that, teacher pay is regularly ranked in the low 40s in the country out of 50 states, so there's 40 other states, 40-something other states, where a teacher could move tomorrow and get better pay. The problem with that, just like any business owner would tell you, if you don't give competitive wages, someone's going to go and work somewhere else. You're going to lose your talent, you're going to constantly have turnover, you're going to waste money retraining people, on average, in the Palm Beach County School District because of turnover. They hire in excess of 1,200 new teachers a year, and every five years, that means that 50% of the teaching population literally just got hired five years ago or less. So teacher turnover is a serious concern, we need to remain competitive. If you look at college enrollment and education programs, people don't want to become teachers anymore. So not only are we losing the existing talent, but we're counterfeiting ourselves by not even letting people come into the profession because it's not lucrative enough to do anything and sustain a normal middle-class life. If this were to pass in November, teachers based on years of experience would receive supplements, either $1,000, $5,000, or $10,000, depending on their range of experience over a career, that would increase their base pay and allow them to get up to where they would have been if not for the recession and what was essentially five years of frozen wages or no salary increases for teachers. So what you have before you is a package of positive things that address the most critical concerns in our schools. Safety and mental health, providing choice and options for our students in terms of curriculum, and ensuring that the highest-quality caliber teachers are in our classroom and not fleeing the profession to go work somewhere else. Next slide. So I threw this one in here because we talk about every year, it's by law, we have to mention what our tax rate is and what the rollback rate would be, and if we implemented the rollback rate, which is essentially wiping out all property value gains to zero out people's property tax increase so your taxes don't go up. We, as a commission, make that decision unilaterally. If three people on this commission decide to raise our taxes, it happens. If they decide to accept the rollback rate, it happens. The state legislature controls the local required property tax for the school district, and for as long as you can go back in time, they have imposed the rollback rate. Every single year, they say property values have gone up, you need to lower your property taxes by law, and that basically wipes out new revenue. You can see up there in the yellow line, if you go back to 2012 and now through 2019, the property tax rate for the school district is the lowest it's been in the past seven or eight years. Every single year, the rate goes down by law, the district can do nothing about it, and essentially that means that they don't see any increase in revenue from property taxes, but they have to be subject to the whim of the legislature, which last year appropriated 47 cents of unrestricted funds per student for each school district. So that means in a school district like Palm Beach County with about 200,000 kids, they literally gave them $100,000 to increase wages for their employees. It's not just teachers, there's almost 27,000 full and part-time employees. So if they had not done this over these years, if they had naturally been allowed to watch their property tax rate stay at the normal level but capture those new revenues from increasing values, that would mean they would have $180 million additional dollars right now on the books to pay for everything that I'm talking about. We could fund it ourselves if not for the rollback rate. So what you have before you in this referendum is a question to simply pay the amount of taxes that you would have been paying if the legislature had not intervened and prevented these funds from being given to the school district. Next slide. A big question that comes up, and it's a fair question, two years ago, a sales tax increase was implemented throughout Palm Beach County. Half of that went to the school district, a quarter of it went to the county government, and then the other quarter was divvied up amongst the municipalities. The big distinction to make here is that this was for capital improvements. Not one cent of this tax increase on the sales tax can go towards personnel. They could not hire teachers, they could not give raises to teachers. All that money goes to is construction, deferred maintenance, and technology upgrades in the classroom. And that's necessary because, again, after the recession, there was a lack of funds and they deferred basically a decade's worth of maintenance. The difference here is that this referendum on the ballot before you today is exclusively for personnel needs. Pay teachers more, keep teachers in those career and technical positions, more police officers, more mental health practitioners. It's another ask from the school district, and that's obviously a risk, you know, how many times can you ask the public to continue to pay more? But fortunately, if you listen to the message, you're paying less in property taxes to the school district than you have each and every year for the past seven or eight years. So this new tax really just catches us up to where we should have been and pays for all those things that we're looking for. Next slide. As far as what this tax is, I said it already existed in 2010, it was reauthorized in 14, and here we are again, but we're asking for more. In the past, it was a quarter mil special tax, it meant for every $100,000 of assessed home value, you paid 25 extra dollars. So if you had a $300,000 assessed house, you were paying $75 a year to fund those 650 positions. In order to fund those additional needs that I mentioned, school security, mental health, and teacher raises, we're asking to go from a quarter mil to a one full mil. So instead of paying $25 per 100,000, you're paying $100 per 100,000. So that same homeowner who owns a $300,000 house goes from paying $75 to $300, an increase of $225 a year to provide for all of those things that I mentioned before. Next slide. And lastly, a question that comes up, and it's a valid one, too. Many years back, when the state lottery was created, they said this money is going to go to education. What they didn't say was that it was simply going to cover existing costs, so it did not increase education funding for public schools at all, it covered existing costs, then they took that money and spent it elsewhere. A good portion of the lottery money also goes to Bright Future Scholarships, which is to reduce the cost of tuition for students who are residents of Florida to stay in Florida universities. So I'll wrap it up at that and just say that, you know, we sit up here and we've maintained the tax rate for as long as I've been up here. The only thing that could make me vote to increase property taxes in this city is if we had a need to increase public safety. If our fire and our police were insufficient, I think that's a valid reason to provide additional services and raise taxes to fund that. In addition to that, it's not within our purview as a city commission, but public education is the foundation of all social mobility and economic mobility. Without public schools, people who are born into poverty would likely stay in poverty because they wouldn't be provided a free education paid for by society to allow them to learn and grow and become, you know, professionals and productive members of society. So it's important that this passes, it's important to me, not just as a teacher, but as a city commissioner. Our schools greatly need increased security and mental health personnel. We can't continue this trend in this country with these school shootings, and I can't fathom a situation where the federal government fixes it or even the state government fixes it, but we can do what we can do here locally by providing these funds and these resources. So with that, the last thing I'll say is you have a four-page ballot before you this year with the Constitution Revision Committee questions, a lot of offices. This is the last item on the ballot. So what we're telling people who are inclined to support this, just like kids fatigue out on long tests, people fatigue out on ballots, a four-page ballot, people are going to give up. At some point in all those Constitution questions, people who don't know are just going to stop and turn it in. I would ask you, and to spread this information to anyone that you want to help support this, tell them to go to the end of the ballot, vote on the last question first, and then go back to the front of the ballot and work their way back through it. And that way, if they fatigue out, at least they took care of the local need that'll support students and teachers and make our schools safer and better. Election date is on November 6th, but absentee ballots are out. Early voting starts on October 22nd. I thank you for the time, and I appreciate the commission and all of you indulging me. Thank you very much.
All right. And then, next is, I want to recognize Stephanie Soplo, Recreation and Assessment Specialist, for winning the Employee of the Year for the Special Needs Advisory Coalition of Palm Beach County. The Special Needs Advisory Coalition's mission is to provide a comprehensive, integrated system of care which supports and connects individuals with special needs and disabilities and their families to community-based services and opportunities. The Employee of the Year Award honors an individual that embodies excellence, integrity, and passion in providing support services to the Palm Beach County Special Needs Community. Stephanie works in the Recreation and Parks Department as a recreational and assessment specialist. She is responsible for working with full-time and part-time staff in the city's recreation centers to provide guidance and coordination for inclusion of children and adults with special needs. She also works with the special events staff in the city manager's office to ensure accessibility at citywide events. She's a quick learner, a creative thinker, and a problem solver, a collaborator, and a trustworthy person. She not only gets the job done, but also lifts up everyone along the way. Stephanie takes American Sign Language class after work to improve her communication skills and is often found at community events, in and outside of the city volunteering. We are very fortunate to have Stephanie Soplo working at the City of Boynton Beach and congratulate her on this award. Would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted to thank you Mayor Grant, Commission, City Manager, also Wally Major is the Recreation and Parks Director, Debbie Major is the ADA Coordinator, Mary Dugruff and Wright, Special Events Program Manager, and all of my coworkers, because as Commissioner Casello had said earlier when he was speaking, that to have any solution, it's about the partnership, and we all work together. Inclusion is very important to me, and I'm just so honored to be working with the leadership team who supports and has such a passion for inclusion, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me, when we did the agenda, did we do that add-on?
I mentioned, I did not do that add-on.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda with that add-on, please, so we can keep our-
All right, and then the other thing is, I also wanted to mention about early voting. It starts on October 22nd over at the Isel Hester Center from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., if I'm not mistaken. All right. Now we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations, please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Yep.
As I say hello, Suzanne Rollins, who owns Children's Museum.
Very well, chap.
Just talking about, anyway, I'm here with a quick update. September at the museum has ended on a strong note, and we welcomed over 415 more guests this year in September than we did last year. October has also started out quite strong, and we have a lot of Halloween-inspired activities going on. On October 19th, Friday, is Pumpkin Day themed Fabulous Fun Friday. Wednesday, the 24th, is a Halloween-themed super sensory messy play at 3:00 p.m. On Friday, the 26th, is a not-so-scary Halloween celebration at 10:30. And the museum is participating in Pirate Fest by having a booth in the children's area. We'll be doing two interactive activities, promoting that we are actually open during construction, and giving away free BOGO passes to the children. A new exhibit has opened in the museum, Boynton Builders' Supply, in honor of the construction that's taking place, where children can build with child-size foam, concrete blocks, planks, bricks, and pavers. For those who may be curious, yes, there was a real Boynton Builders' Supply here once upon a time. And in addition, we have two new programs starting this month. Music Together is an internationally recognized music program for children and the adults who love them, which is partially under- there was a real Boynton Builders Supply here once upon a time. And in addition, we have two new programs starting this month. Music Together is an internationally recognized music program for children and the adults who love them, which is partially underwritten by the Cultural Council of Palm Beach County. And we're also starting Tumbletots, which is a tumbling class for little ones. As always, we invite you to visit the Schoolhouse Children's Museum, where learning is an adventure. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Adam Turri. I live at 9286 Plantation Estates Drive Row of Palm Beach, Florida. And tonight, I'm here to thank Joe Casello for his friendship, for, as he said earlier in the evening, when he was speaking, that he was going knocking on the fire station's doors to find firefighters and someone to support him. Well, the person he was looking for was me. And to be honest with you, I was a little hesitant, because I heard a rumor, some guy said, hey, some guy, some retired firefighter from Worcester, Mass, he's looking for support. And I was like, ah, this is going to be an issue. There's, you know, there's always people coming around, like, coming knocking on our doors, like, hey, we're running for commission, and we want your support. And I was a little hesitant for me, and then my union president said, hey, you got to meet with this guy. So I sat down and talked to him, and right from the beginning, I knew he was something special. And I was very impressed with his hard work, his work ethic. And I'm sure all you Commissioners understand this. You guys put up, you do a lot of extra, little extra activities, from book reading, from, you know, CRA meetings, you know, chili cook-offs, you know, there's so many things that people ask you to do, and, you know, you do your best to oblige everybody. So it's, and I know Joe really appreciates all the work that all you Commissioners put in. But, you know, his, it was funny, from the very beginning, he worked very hard. You know, he was the first commissioner really came out with us, put signs up. He brought his own shovels. He did everything you would ask for from a candidate. He even helped put Commissioner Merker's signs in the grounds, if he only would have knew. So, but that was Joe. He's there to help. He's always there to listen to anybody had any issues. And, you know, I just wanted to thank you. Thank you from our local union, Boynton Beach Fire Rescue Local 1891, thanks you for the years of service, the dedication, and wish you good luck in Tallahassee. And hopefully, maybe you can do something about red lights, cameras up there.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you so much, Adam.
Hi, Fred Angelo. Would you need my address? 16428 75th Avenue North, Jupiter, Florida, 33418. That's my real address, Joe. I came here to speak to my buddy Joe, Commissioner Casello. It's been great, buddy. It's been great, from the first cry on the telephone while I was in Tallahassee and you were here, thinking you won by seven votes. You only won by three. You didn't even know you hadn't even won the election. You called me crying, ready to go. It's pretty good. That was pretty good. You hadn't even drank a beer yet that night. So I just want to tell you, you're used to sitting in the front. You're going to be in the State House. Democrats sit in the back. That's the first thing. Second thing is, you don't get a microphone half of the votes. So get used to yelling and file your bills on time. All right? Other than that, buddy, we'll be there. We're there supporting you. I'm sure these folks are going to be supporting you, and we're all counting on you. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred.
Hi, I'm Kevin Homer. I live at 2505 Lake Drive North here in Boynton Beach. I'm here to discuss the past two Boynton Cares cleanups. The first cleanup occurred on International Cleanup Day. Boynton Cares was one of 60 cleanup groups here in Palm Beach County participating in this large-scale event. Sponsors included Solid Waste Authority, Papa John's Pizza, Steve over at the Shell Gas Station on the corner of Gateway and Federal, Del Sol Bakery, Deep Ocean Reef Bar and Grill, Bonefish Grill, Dominique's of Boynton Beach, and Driftwood. We even had a couple restaurants give gift cards from surrounding cities, including Old Keen Lime House from Lantana and Taverna Trilla in Del Ray. During the past six cleanups, we've removed more than 1,000 pounds of harmful plastic from this park alone. Intercoastal Park is a super unique, it's super unique in that we have a freshwater lake, a playground, pavilions galore, but most important are the mangroves, which filter the water, serve as a nesting ground for marine life, and they also prevent erosion. But if you continue looking east, past the recent signage, Wally Majors was responsible for adding, thank you, Wally, we have the Intercoastal Waterway. And then the Boynton Beach Inlet, which is the gateway to the ocean, and ultimately, the Gulf Stream, which is the international, which is the international highway bringing pollution to and from Boynton Beach. It is these very waters that connect us to the rest of the world. In the attempts to bring in fresh faces and expand this Boynton Beach movement, a group of volunteers from Seacrest Recovery, who have been with us since the beginning, will be adopting their own Boynton Beach park. My personal goal is to help guide any person who wants to adopt a park, do just that. Ultimately, I would like every park in Boynton Beach adopted by people in the community. And the very best part for you, the Commissioners and Mayor of Boynton Beach, is that we are using zero financial resources from the city, and you can take that to Tallahassee, Joe, as well. Thank you for your time and support. And thank you to one of the hardest-working volunteers, Mayor Grant. Thank you, Wally Majors, and Wayne Carols, who calls Boynton Cares contagious. Thank you, Alex from Channel 5 News. And last but not least, a woman who's in the back is Chelsea from the Palm Beach Post. The media is extremely powerful. And I appreciate you. The community appreciates you. And if the plants and animals out there could speak, they'd voice the same gratitude. So thank you very much.
Herb Suss, 1711 Woodfarn. This past weekend, I was on a Southeast Honor Flight. I want to thank the city because the fire department-
Herb, you got to speak into the mic.
The fire department and the police department had their people on overhead bridges. They were up early in the morning. If they had a call, they took care of the call. And I want to thank the city, the cops, and the fire department. And Joe, I want to wish you the best. Sorry to lose you, but you're going on to greater heights. I'm cutting this Honor Flight short. There's much more to tell about it. But the important thing I want to bring out is about Alzheimer's disease. I have volunteered to put my selfishly rear end on the line, which I did. I don't talk a good ballgame. I do it. The Alzheimer's, I'm 441, I'm being treated for a plaque that they discovered on the brain. I participated in a program, and it's a breakthrough. That's why I'm cutting short. It's called Band 2400. What it has done, it has stopped a plaque in me that my, it doesn't cure Alzheimer's, but it stops the plaque. This November, I got a call, they're going to continue this Band 2400. I'm going to be treated again, again, putting my rear end in. I did it selfishly for myself, but it's helping people. And what it does, there's different strands. It's called, ESI is the company in Japan that does this. I have been tested. They do MRIs, CAT scans. They don't let you alone. They take care of you. But I want to proudly announce that so far, on the first infusion for a year and a half, it has stopped. In fact, I went up a couple of points on memory. The continuation in November will be different strands, and I'll be getting that on a test, which is a little more risky, for another two years. And it is a little more risky because they increase the dose, but I'm willing to do it. But there is, because if they're doing this, there's been a breakthrough. And that's, the person that spoke about Alzheimer's, there's a breakthrough, and I'm living proof of it. And getting back to the hand, I want to thank the city for letting the police and the fire. You cannot imagine what this Saturday, this past Saturday was. It was mind-bellting. When I got out of the Marine Corps in the Korean War, they called me a murderer, but then when I saw what happened Saturday reinforced my situation.
Continue, yes.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for public comments? Seeing no one coming up, public comments, public audience is now closed. Moving on to administrative, we have-
None.
None. The seats available. We have the advisory boards, the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Education and Youth Advisory Board, looking for students, and the Historic Resource Preservation Board. Moving on to consent agenda, would anyone like to pull an item from consent's agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose. Motion is approved unanimously. Moving off, moving on to public hearing. The city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission.
No, no, skip some. 7 bids and purchases.
Did I do two, yep, turn two pages. There we go. 7A, bids and purchases over 100,000. Proposed resolution number 18-152, approve utilizing City of Boca Raton's Florida bid with Action Labor Management doing business as staffing connection of West Palm Beach, Florida for school crossing guard service at an estimated annual cost of 390,000, and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Action Labor Management, the City of Boca Raton's procurement process is satisfied, the City of Boca Raton's procurement process satisfied the city's competitive bid requirements. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to ask, I need to speak to chief, I'm just saying in regards to this, because there's a lot of crossing guards who have approached me, and they're saying that they are the lowest paid in the county, and I need to know, will this give them an increase in wages?
Michael Gregory, Police Chief. Yes, Commissioner, this will increase the hourly rate that the crossing guards are earning.
Okay, explain to me, not explain, state to me, what are they getting now?
Currently, crossing guards are making $12.56 per hour, and they get a three-hour minimum proposed per day. And under the contract that we're piggybacking from the city of Boynton Beach, that'll go to an hourly rate of $20.19 an hour, but they're only getting two hours proposed per day.
So they'd be getting $20.19 an hour, starting when?
Point that this contract goes into effect, would be my understanding.
I'm sorry.
When this would go into effect? When this goes into effect?
Yes, when this is going to affect.
When you sign it.
After we sign it? Okay. Well, that's good news for the crossing guards. I'm just saying, we don't want to lose crossing guards. I'm just saying to another city, you know, when we have ones that's here that say that they're underpaid and they enjoy doing their work for our students. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing no more? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose? Motion is approved unanimously. Award bid, metal containers and roll-offs to iron container of Miami, Florida, as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for an estimated annual expenditure of 150,000. The bid is for a two-year period beginning on date of award and can be renewed for three additional one-year terms. The bid will be utilized on an as-needed basis. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Discussion?
Yes.
What do we do with the old containers?
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. We actually salvage them, and they'd use it for scrap metal. We return it. We get money back on those. So when they're past repair, we actually repair the ones. Typically, we repair them. Once they're past the point of repair, we take those to, in Riviera Beach, to a salvage yard, and they give us money back for the steel.
Okay, in regards to the money that we get back, what account does that place in?
I'd have to check. Sanitation, Solid Waste Fund.
How much have we received thus far? I'm just saying for fiscal year 2018.
I'd have to get back to you on that.
You can get back to me. I'm just saying, you know, all the time we getting money back, I'd just like, you know, to know that we are at least getting some money back. I'm just saying that should be a note that you all should pass on to us as elected officials. I'm just saying we're spending money, but we're also getting money in return. That's one of my concerns. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Ordinance number 18-028.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing abandonment of the unimproved 15-foot-wide alley running east-west from Seacrest Boulevard to Northeast First Street, between Northeast Fourth Avenue and Northeast Fifth Avenue, more particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Moved. Second.
Any discussion or presentation? Seeing none. I'm aware that this is where the Cottage District is, and so this is the abandonment area for that Cottage District. All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
Next, proposed ordinance number 18-027.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing abandonment of the unimproved 10.2-foot-wide alley running north-south from Northeast Ninth Avenue for a distance of approximately 148 feet, more particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion or comments from the board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
Proposed ordinance number 18-023, third reading.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing the abandonment of a portion of Northeast First Avenue, more particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion from the board? I just want to make sure that we got everything right this time?
It is correct now.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more further discussions, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Item D is approve McDonald's restaurant conditional use and major site plan modification. The applicant has requested us to table this to November 7, 2018.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Next, item E, proposed ordinance number 18-029.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 89-38 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property, commonly known as 1320 South Federal Highway, and described herein, owned by Exosora One Inc., changing the land use designation from Office Commercial OC to Mixed Use Low MXL, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date.
Also, is this for ordinance number 18-030? As part of the same item?
Yes. Is it?
Yep.
I don't have that one there. Okay, the other ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02-013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as 1320 South Federal Highway, from C1 Office Professional to MU1 Mixed Use 1, providing for conflict, severability- I, so what you have is? The, the ordinance number is eighteen dash zero-three-zero, and then the title says that it's amending ordinance zero-two dash zero-one-three. Okay.
And do you want to swear everyone in who is going, about to speak?
Is anyone going to speak? Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be true? Thank you.
All right. You may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, for the record, my name is Bradley Miller, I'm here representing the applicant. But before I do that, I have to say, uh, I can't say farewell, I can't say goodbye to Commissioner Casello because I know that I'll always be able to go back to Copper Point and still find him there. But I want to say thank you for, uh, the, the work that you've done here, the service that you've done for the city. It, it has been, uh, an improvement with you up there and then it's been a pleasure working with you, uh, as we've gone through these six years, uh, together. Uh, I've, I've enjoyed that time, so, thank you.
And I'd just like to remark, Bradley, uh, you've been a constant professional in your presentations up here, you've made decisions easy on the projects you brought forward in the last six years here, you're, you do a great job and I appreciate the, the time and the, how you have, uh, one-on-ones with us and explain exactly what needs to be known. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, I hope you have that same opinion on the next two items.
Mr. Miller, before you start, I'm just saying, remember you stated that on the oath, sir, thank you.
Uh, this, this project is, uh, known as thirteen-twenty South Federal Highway, which is the, the address of the property. I'm, uh, joined here tonight, our, our client is here, uh, the developer, uh, as well as the architect, Jim Williams from AW Architects, Dave Bodker, our landscape architect, and Zach Todd, our engineer, if those questions come up. I do realize that this is first reading, um, I'll go through the site plan stuff quickly knowing that it's tabled, but I think it does help, uh, um, you as well as the public to, to see, uh, the, the project that's being proposed here. Uh, the, the site is located at the northeast corner of Federal Highway in Riviera Drive. Uh, for, uh, those of us who have been around the city for a while, it used to be the old IHOP, uh, property, uh, years ago, and has been, uh, cleared for several years and, and undeveloped. Uh, surrounding it is Colonial Center, which is an office complex to the north. Uh, there are single-family homes that, uh, extend along Riviera Drive to the east. Snug Harbor condo, uh, facility, condo community to our south. One Boynton or the, uh, the former Los Fontanas southwest, and across the road is Duncan Donuts. And what we're, uh, asking here for tonight is a change to the, uh, land use and the rezoning. Uh, it's really following the CRA redevelopment plan, which actually designates this site for, uh, a mixed-use two designation, or a mixed-use medium designation by, by land use, but because of its property size, we had to drop it down, uh, one level to mixed-use low, but it's still a mixed-use, uh, proposed use, which is consistent with the CRA redevelopment plan. The, uh, the portion of the, the slide on the left-hand side is, uh, your future land use map, the portion of it, uh, and the site is identified there, it's, uh, located within the, um, OC, which is, uh, office commercial designation. Uh, and, uh, as I indicated, the master plan shows it, the CRA master plan or redevelopment plan calls it out for the mixed-use medium, we're proposing mixed-use low, so it's consistent with that. The existing zoning is a C-one, which is a commercial designation, also for office development, and, uh, we're proposing the mixed-use one, uh, designation. Uh, and a similar, uh, the, the zoning map is, is there on the right-hand side. Our plan, actually, let me go back to, to this slide. Some people may ask, so why are you changing this? Uh, there, because it's given, uh, designations for office development already, and, um, and we're proposing, uh, an office development with a mix of use of retail in here. For this, this particular property and with the CRA redevelopment plan, there is a, a, an incentive for pushing, uh, buildings closer to the street, creating more pedestrian-friendly type of, uh, development along Federal Highway, putting the parking back behind those buildings so it's a little more hidden, uh, and, uh, that's what we're proposing to do here in, uh, in, uh, this development is to utilize that and follow that redevelopment plan. Uh, for our site plan, and I, I will go through this quickly, the, uh, the building is located up along Federal Highway, it's, uh, about, uh, just under eleven thousand square feet, it's a three-story building. We have thirty-two parking spaces on site, we have thirteen parking spaces along Riviera Drive, which is something that has been encouraged, uh, by your staff, is to provide on-street parking. Um, and, um, there, there, at the PND meeting, there were some questions about drainage and turnaround. Uh, right now, there is no drainage system on that property at all, so water runs off the property into the street. Uh, with the development of the property, there will be a drainage system that will be under the parking lot, so it goes into catch basins, into exfiltration trench, and it's treated that way. The permitting process is one of the more regulated, uh, parts of development where City of Boynton Beach, Lakewood Drainage District, South Florida Water Management District, there's three agencies right there that all look at the drainage system, and, uh, the, the requirement is that there is no impact of our development and the drainage of our development that would carry over onto any adjacent properties, so it's all contained as part of our development project. There's, uh, pedestrian areas, uh, both along the front, we have sixteen feet of pedestrian space in the front. Uh, the, the light blue areas that are on both sides of the building are covered canopy areas, so you'll see here in a moment where, uh, although the, within that sixteen feet of it, eleven of it is actually covered by the, uh, the second and third floors. Uh, I plugged in the plant list here, this is actually a carryover from, uh, the Planning and Development Board, and I don't know if Susan Oyer is here or not, but, but we specifically highlighted some of the plant material to call out the native plant material, which is something that, uh, she likes to see. And when you, uh, put the site plan into the development, you can, uh, see how it, how it fits into it, into the aerial photograph. We will be re, uh, resurfacing, uh, Riviera Drive in that, the area that's, that's highlighted there, and, uh, providing those, uh, uh, parallel spaces along that area. Architecturally, um, this is the elevations, that's the west elevation that's, uh, that's actually looking from Federal Highway, and this is the east elevation, which would be the backside of the building. Personally love the modern, uh, styled, uh, architecture. And we can go more into detail here in the second reading and site plan, uh, what, that comes up, I guess it's on November sixth now, for, for the new, uh, the, the last reading.
Seventh.
November seventh. The mix of uses, there's going to be a retail component on the ground floor. Our tenant here, our prin, principal tenant, won't, won't be, uh, completely for the entire building, but for most of the building is, uh, Dr. Gritsula, who is a dermatologist, he's here in town already, he's been renting space for a long period of time, uh, your city manager can, uh, vouch for the long period of time. Uh, oops. And, uh, for her children. And, uh, um, he's, uh, been wanting to have his own place and, uh, thankfully he's staying here in the city and, uh, using this opportunity to move his business there. Along with that, with the retail part, he'll, he wants to do, it's a high-end dermatology place, he'll have, have the creams and the lotions and things like that that'll be, uh, provided in the retail space on the ground level. The other part on the ground level that's interesting is, uh, Dr. Gritsula has an art collection. And so the, in the lobby area, uh, we have a, a, an art museum that will be open during public hours for the public to go in and, and view. And then because of the design and the architecture with the glass on, on, uh, the, uh, really on all sides, they'll be able to see it really twenty-four-seven, uh, from the sidewalk area. And this is just designating tho, those spaces. Then on the second and third floors is the, the medical office, uh, space. There's also a, a rooftop terrace, um, which, uh, I'll, I'll touch on more, where they'll use that, uh, for a, a meditation area, some yoga, it'll be part of the treatment that, uh, that they will serve, uh, as part of the medical office treatment. I'm going to, this, this pertains to a height exception, which has also been tabled, um, there, uh, just, uh, quick on that, the height exception is something that the code actually allows for, for mechanical equipment above the, the maximum height and, uh, to provide the, uh, elevator shaft and the stairwell, uh, to, uh, get to the, the rooftop, uh, we're requesting a height exception, and we can go into that in more detail in second reading. These renderings, uh, uh, compliment, uh, Jim Williams' office at AW Architect for putting these together and, and give some kudos to the city staff. They suggested, uh, give us some shots of what this would look like as if you're driving, uh, westbound on Riviera Drive, coming out of the community at night. Uh, I think this gives it a great perspective of, of what that development would look like. And when they, they first did it, it was, uh, we were showing the, the landscape, uh, as if it was, uh, early planting. And then I said, can you take it another level and show us what it's going to be like when the plants grow in and mature? And you can see how, how, uh, the landscape, uh, fills in that space and, and would, uh, provide, actually to me, I consider it kind of complements the, uh, the building and the development design. This one, I'm not sure how to do this from here, so I'm going to step over, oh, it, it started automatically, great. This, this is a, a, a video clip that they've also put together, which I think gives you a great perspective. It's the first time that I feel like a, uh, TV broadcaster where I have to do something while things are moving, uh, but it gives you a great perspective of the architecture, the, the slats that they're using, uh, to, uh, to provide, uh, a, a feature for the open stairwells. This takes you up to the, uh, the rooftop deck, which will, uh, it was best described, uh, by, by my client as, it's like your patio at, at your home, where if you want to get out and use some outdoor space, need some outdoor space, it's there for employees, it's there for their, uh, for their patients to use. And just kind of a quiet area. This gives you the perspective, that's Federal Highway going, uh, across the bottom, and then this, uh, shows you the perspective as you come into the parking lot off of Riviera Jim, don't take this the wrong way, but I think here I went, I'm going to point out somewhere here, there's a couple walking along the street and they just, their legs are moving, but they, they don't go anywhere. So, we're working on our animation. Then this carries over into the interior of the building, which, uh, is, uh, complements the modern architecture. So, uh, I'll close with that, uh, we believe that this is, uh, fulfilling the goals of the CRA redevelopment plan of, uh, having a mixed use. Uh, it keeps, uh, an existing business here in Boynton Beach and, uh, provides a, a, a nice development for a parcel that's been vacant for quite a while, so, I'm, I'm here, our, our team is here if there's any questions to address.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Vice Mayor.
No question, but just a comment, I really do like and appreciate the open stairwell concept, I think, uh, you know, in this day and age in terms of safety and, um, you know, um, the workers, coworkers, um, sometimes feeling unsafe in certain environments, I think that's a, that's a very great, um, aspect to the, uh, build-out of the building, so, thank you to, I guess, you and the architects and whoever for thinking of that design concept.
That's all architect, I can't take anything on that one.
Well, you'll, you'll pass it along for me. Thank you.
And I would just like to say something I said earlier, you put some of the best presentations, but now you added another level with animation, that's, you're going beyond.
That's, that's, that's Jim again, so, uh...
Great job, Bradley.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody from the public that would like to, uh, ask a question or have a comment?
My name is Linda Morton, six forty-one Riviera Drive. Um, I am also, um, president of the Colonial Center Condo Office Association, which is the, uh, north-adjacent property, so this proposal has both a personal and a work interest for me. Um, the main, one of the main things that I had a question about was, uh, the width of the street, um, they're showing, right now, our street barely accommodates two cars going down that street. They're showing parking on both sides, so it seems to me that obviously now we're talking of a four-lane, uh, four-car width leg, uh, width that would have, that street would have to be, uh, made for, and I'm wondering how they're going to encroach upon either Snug Harbor's property or the existing property in order to make that road available for four with the cars.
Is it, is that your only question?
Uh, no, and I was, um, a second question I had was, um, he mentioned that there's a height exception, they're requesting for mechanical equipment, but, um, it seems as though besides the mechanical equipment, they're looking for, um, a space for people to use on the roof. You know, my first question is, how often is that ever going to be used, because we live in South Florida? But I'm also wondering, are there going to be a lot, parties or nighttime activities that are allowed on that that would, uh, create a, a vast amount of noise for, as, because the sound travels so greatly on that water there? And, um, also I'm wondering if the entrance for the parking lot for this property is set up to allow, um, the, a commercial vehicle to maneuver into that, because, um, right now, the way Riviera Drive comes down and opens into our parking lot at the Colonial Center, it's a real tight turn for a lot of commercial vehicles, and if the commercial vehicles aren't able to make an adequate turn, I see them creating traffic up and down Riviera Drive.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, uh, I'm going to close it and ask the applicant to, uh, address those questions if you have those, that information.
Be happy to. To explain Riviera Drive, the, the, there's, not only is there pavement in Riviera Drive, but then there's area on the outside of the pavement itself that's considered the right-of-way. There's fifty feet of, of width of right-of-way there, and the, the proposed parking and, and the reconstruction of Riviera Drive will all be within that fifty feet, so there's no encroachment into our site with the, with the parallel parking or into Snug Harbor on the south side. It's all within the public right-of-way that it's being done. The roadway width, I believe, is twenty-two feet, uh, twenty-two or twenty-four feet, which is, uh, the, the city's, uh, minimum width, and then the parking spaces are on the outside of that, so there's, uh, it's meeting all the criteria for the cross-section that's required for city streets within the city. As far as the, the rooftop, th, this is a business, it's, it's, uh, not intended for, uh, late-night parties by, by any means, um, so it would be, uh, used more for, uh, quiet time, uh, for, uh, the patients and, and the employees of the, of the, uh, the doctor up there during business hours. And then the, the maneuvering of trucks and vehicles, uh, when we went through this process, I, I know the five of you know that your staff puts in a lot of time in reviewing these, and one of the, the, uh, uh, most extensive on this one was looking at it for the maneuverability through the parking lot for, uh, the, especially for the fire and emergency access. So if fire and emergency access can make it, make it through there, uh, commercial vehicles can make it through. So your staff made sure that that was, um, on par as well. So, I, uh, I believe that addresses the, the questions, would be happy to address any others if you have.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Seeing none? Seeing none. We had, what is it? Have we had the motion to approve for each of these ordinances?
I have.
So, we'll have a proposed ordinance number 18-029. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Notice five to zero.
And proposed ordinance number 18-030. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Notice five to zero.
The applicant has asked us to table items F and G till November 7th.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, you don't have to go too far. Proposed ordinance number 18-024.
All right, this, there's, there's three ordinances under this item. So, first is an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, annexing .30 acres of land that is contiguous to the city limits within Palm Beach County, and that will, upon annexation, constitute a reasonably compact addition to the city boundaries, providing that the proper land use designation and proper zoning of the property shall be reflected in separate ordinances to be passed simultaneously herewith, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date, providing that this ordinance shall be filed with the Clerk of the Circuit Court of Palm Beach County, Florida, upon adoption. The next one, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 89-38 by amending the future land use element of comprehensive plan for property commonly loaned as Goodstone Town Homes and described herein, owned by Goodstone LLC, changing the land use designation from commercial high with the underlying medium-density residential MR5 MAX Density 5 DUAC to special-high-density residential SHDR, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. And the last one, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02-013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Goodstone Town Homes from commercial general CG to infill planned unit development IPUD, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
All right, may I? Motion for ordinance number 18-024.
Second.
All right, thank you. I guess, does the applicant want to re-present? Or?
The only part, my presentation is more so, the site plan wasn't really heard at the first reading, so I would go into that for the last item.
For the site plan?
I could either make the presentations now and continue that for the three items read plus item I, which is the site plan, or I don't know how you would prefer.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like for them to go ahead and do the presentation. I'm just saying, just in case something comes up, I'm just saying before we do all three.
I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you.
And you're still sworn in.
Yes, thanks. Before I get started, I want to say that Joe, no, we did that already. Again, just for the record, my name is Bradley Miller with Miller Land Planning, and also on this one, I'm here with our engineer, our civil engineer, our architect, Steve Knight and Dave Bodcar, landscape architect, should they, they need some questioning. This is a project called Goodstone Town Homes. It's a small property, again, on the south, even farther south than the last application on Federal Highway. It's a third of an acre, and it's surrounded. Waterside is to the north, there's a single-family residential development to the east, Trade Winds to the southeast, Seaborn Cove is on the west side, Bayfront is on the west side of Federal Highway. It's a third of an acre, and what we're asking for in our application here tonight are really four things, is annexation, which is bringing the property out of the county into the city. Currently, it's actually still under the jurisdiction of Palm Beach County, and when you do that, then you apply your land use designation that's appropriate for the site. We're requesting the special-high-density residential land use. And then the zoning district is an infill planned unit development IPUD, which is really established for small parcels like this to be able to work with the, with the design, have some flexibility with the design to make them viable uses. And then lastly, is our site plan application that shows what it is. This slide is showing you the areas in this area of the city that are actually still in unincorporated Palm Beach County. The light gray area is the city of Boynton Beach. The right side of the screen is actually Ocean Ridge, and then the yellow and the red are these small pockets of county, especially the red pockets, are county property. So, this, this again is located within the county. It has a current designation for commercial high. It's the highest designation for commercial use in Palm Beach County, and we're requesting to change that to a residential density for special-high-density residential of 20 units per acre. Likewise, the zoning in the county is GC, which is general commercial, and we're modifying that and proposing that it be approved as infill planned unit development, changing it from a commercial designation to a residential designation. Our site plan consists of a four-unit building for townhomes. The access would be off of Chucker Road, which is a small road that leads back between Waterside and this property. There's about a dozen homes to the east of us that it serves. And then our driveway would come into the, into the development. Is this a pointer, Ed? I'll try it. No. That one just shuts all the lights and the air conditioning off. I have one here, too. Doesn't work with the screen.
Doesn't.
I'll go to my verbal description. So, the driveway, which is the tan area there, comes into the site, and then the units are the reddish building, four units. The end units have a single-car garage, they're three-story, they're a little over 2,800 square feet total with three bedrooms. The internal units, the two internal units have two-car garage, they're a little over 3,000 square feet and have the potential for four bedrooms. When we, as I mentioned last time, we started this project out with five units, actually the density allows up to six, and through working with your staff, we've come to this one having four units. And that was primarily driven to be able to have sufficient parking to not only serve the residents of the units, but if they would have some guests. There's a total of 12 parking spaces, including the garage, and then there are six parking spaces that are surface parking that are related to the units themselves. I basically just went through the table that came down the screen. Something that's part of the IPUD section of your code is that there's a minimum of 1,000 square feet of recreational area that be provided, and our development here is proposing over 1,400 square feet of a rec area. It's got a boardwalk and an open space area, trellis. It's an area that's going to have a barbecue grill, and it backs up to the canal, the bottom right-hand part of the screen there is a canal, so the residents can use that frontage for their recreational requirements. The other, the northeast part of the property is a drainage area. Our site, similar to our last one, this site is undeveloped, and there were some discussions at our last hearing about the drainage there. It's been, come to be known as Lake Chucker, which is essentially because there's no development there, the road is small, and as people drive into that, it wears down and the water goes to the low point. Our development is going to fix that situation. In fact, as of today, I was talking with your staff, and what we've agreed to do, the green areas that are between Chucker Road, the gray at the top, and the dark-black line, which is our property line, those areas, we're going to widen Chucker Road because right now, there's about 13 feet of pavement there, which is a concern that, quite frankly, we should have picked up on in our design. We're widening that to get it to as wide as possible within the right-of-way that's there, and it'll provide better access as you come off of Federal Highway for two-way traffic on that. We're also committing to resurfacing that area of Chucker Road as part of this redesign along our property frontage, and then it will transition into the existing pavement along there. And most importantly, I think for the residents that spoke last time, is the drainage that's a problem there now will be resolved by making those improvements and pulling that drainage in along with ours to accommodate that on-site and take away Lake Chucker and improve that condition. There's also going to be the ability to use the existing driveway, which is the little gray area right below the word "site," which is a driveway into Waterside and our driveway. The residents spoke about trucks that go wayward down this small little street for some reason. I don't know why they would go down there, but apparently they do. But it would give them the opportunity to make a turnaround using a three-point turn, using both of the driveways that are existing for Waterside and our development. And again, this shows how it would fit into the community from an aerial perspective. Architecturally, they're three-story units, they're done in a Mediterranean design, which corresponds with that area in the south area of Federal Highway. Waterside has a very similar architectural feel, as well as Seaborn Cove and Bayfront. This is an end unit of the building, which just shows that it's been treated all the way around on all four sides. Ground level, we have garage, there's a bathroom area on the ground level, room for, whether it's a multipurpose room or kind of that spare bedroom for the guest space. Second story would be our, the living area and the kitchen, and then you go to the third level, which is the bedroom space where there's two bedrooms on the end units and three bedrooms on the interior units. Our landscape plan, again, Dave Bodcar always does a great job with the landscape plan for a tight site of getting the landscape requirements in there. We did get a request from the Planning and Zoning Board to include more plant material for the attraction of butterflies that even made it to the Palm Beach Post, thank you, Chelsea, that, and that's something that we're going to incorporate into the project. Our landscape, with that said, our landscape architect did point out that if you get too carried away with the butterfly-attracting plants, butterflies come from caterpillars that eat plants. So, it's something that's actually a little more scientific that needs to be thought out, and Dave will do that as we go through into our permitting process. So, to wrap up our presentation, we're asking your approval here tonight of annexing this property into the city. There was some questions at the last hearing about ownership of Chucker Road and how all that comes about, what, between Colin and myself, we researched it with the county. I have an email here in my file from the county that basically says, "We own it, but years ago, the obligation of maintenance was given to the property owners along that street." So, the maintenance responsibility is the responsibility of the property owners along the street. I think Colin has some ideas of maybe being able to try to entice the property owners to come into the city and assist them with some of that maintenance program, but we did search that out, and we can get into more of the detail of that answer if you need to, but that's pretty much the summation of that situation with Chucker Road.
Yes. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm glad you spoke about Chucker Road. Okay, since Chucker Road is a county road, do we do police and fire protection on Chucker Road?
No, we do, the only services we offer to the citizens is water services. No police, no fire, unless it's a life-threatening emergency through our inter-local agreement with the county. So, if it's life-threatening and we have to, we respond on behalf of the county. With the county's request.
All right, since we're annexing this property into the city of Boynton, it will behoove this city to go ahead and say, "We need to try to get that road annexed into this city."
It would be good for the city and the citizens if it was part of the city. It would help them with public safety, it would help them with other services.
Commissioner Katz?
Even if the residents agreed to be annexed into the city, would the road still be their possession as homeowners, or would the city then take over the road, since it's now their responsibility, even though it's a county road, it's still their property, right?
That would be something we would work with them on. I mean, the idea would be is we would see if there is a way to make it a better road that meets the standards for public safety, so public safety can access those properties. Right now, the road is not adequate to access the properties through public safety, except in a means of emergency where we may damage things as we're going down that street. So, yeah, the answer is we would investigate that and work through that if that was something that was requested.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm still going to say, it will behoove this city to go and try to get them to annex in this city, since we are annexing this property, county property, into the city. I don't see a point that we leave a stretch of a highway, a road, or whatever you want to call it, where they have no police and no fire protection. I'm just saying, you know, did anybody approach them yet since we started this about, would y'all like to annex into the city of Boynton?
Not yet. We have a little bit of, some research to do to figure out exactly how we would go about doing that, and that's something we were very much interested in doing, and we'll be talking with you about in the future.
Okay. My take is that, I don't mind approving this, but I want to approve it with the condition that we try to get them to annex here into the city. I'm just saying, because we're going to have a road that...
I don't know if you can actually make that an actual condition.
I don't think so.
But certainly, we hear you, and I think the consensus is there.
You hear me, okay.
So, Commissioner McCray, we can put that on a future agenda item, if you, regarding annexation along Chucker Road. All right. Is there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we're going to go for Proposed Ordinance Number 18-024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
And Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
Proposed Ordinance Number 18-025. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a roll call, please?
Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Mr. Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Proposed Ordinance Number 18-026. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
And Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
All right. Last item, aye. "Approve Goodstone Townhome's new site plan to allow construction of a multifamily residential project consisting of four three-story townhomes totaling 12,180 square feet and related site improvements located on the southeast corner of Federal Highway and Chucker Road." May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Good luck, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Joe. We got one of your last items. "Discuss options for the future use of the tennis center."
I feel like a lame duck here. Yeah. It came to my attention that when we're talking budget with the city manager, that the tennis club has a losing-money proposition-type thing, and to a tune of over $100,000 a year, it costs the city to keep it open. The discussion I'd like to have tonight is that do something similar as we did to the golf course, when the golf course was losing money. The fee structure was looked at and revalued. It's on an enterprising account, which means it pays for itself. It's something that I think that the tennis club, we should have that discussion on the tennis. I'm not proposing that we do away with the tennis club or anything like that, only that it's self-sufficient and pays for itself.
You know, my comments are, is that it's next to the, was a barrier-free park. And we know that that doesn't pay for any of itself, because it's, it's a park, it's a recreational activity. Kind of like the tennis center, the fact that we're actually helping to defray the cost of maintaining it, I think is wonderful. The fact is, is that, no, we, we don't have a stadium like Del Ray. You know, we have local people playing and, you know, surrounding area of unincorporated Boynton Beach as well, so that they can play in leagues. One of the things that I'm going to want to talk about on future agenda items was my discussion with the principals. And I think that we really should be leveraging that facility with the school students here in Boynton Beach. You know, I'm not in favor of reducing, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of allowing the staff to adjust the fees as needed, according to their discretion regarding, you know, having different rates for the summer versus winter for daily use. But I'm not in favor of doing much else.
Well, come budget time, it's, like I say earlier, we're losing 100,000, over $100,000 a year on it. That's all I'm asking is that we take a look at the fees, structure the fees in such a manner that it at least pays for itself. I'm not asking anything other than that. It's a club. It's got private, it's like a private club, in essence, where members come in and they pay a fee. We have some of the, it's one of, some of the best courts. Colin described the court to me. It's a high-tech court that, that we use down here. It's a big maintenance cost to the city. Once again, like the golf course, I think that's, the fee structure should be looked at to at least pay for what we're keeping there.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. In regards to fee structure, it's nice to look at that, but I don't want us to start looking at structures where we will start pricing ourselves out of what people will not want to use that facility. I need to ask Wally, I'm just, since you're sitting there, what's the usage of that center?
We have both daily use, and then individuals have the option to purchase an annual permit that basically allows them to use the courts without having to pay the daily fee. I believe we have it as part of our presentation whereby last fiscal year, the annual permits that we sold were 77 for residents and 65 for non-residents. But the daily use, again, these are people that just want, it's a public facility, so anybody can come and play anytime they want, but they have to pay the daily fee. And in that case, in the last fiscal year, we had a little bit over 3,200 people use the, the facility as, as part of a daily use. So...
You know, I, I know you all, you know, do advertisement for it and fun fair. I'm just saying, is there any other way that we're reaching out to citizens in Boynton to let them know that this center is located there, that it's a public center for public use? I'm just saying, how are we advertising?
Well, and as always, there's always a room for improvement. We, we do have fun fair, we do press releases, and, and through social media, we try to reach out to as many people as possible to let them know that the facility is there. I think ultimately, what we're seeing is, is, is just like, even in the golf industry, it, it, the, the popularity of the sport can, can vary from year to year. And, and if we have a, a situation where we might have somebody like Andre Agassi or another American player that's playing really well, or doing well in the Olympics, the, the popularity of the sport increases, and we, we will see that in our daily and, and our annual use numbers. But again, it's one of those things that through the years, all cities throughout this area have had these type of facilities. It, it's just a matter of whether we feel it's appropriate to continue to provide this level of service to our community whereby, yes, the, the surface that we use, although it's very, very common, the hardwood surface is just a, a, a material that is ideal for tennis courts, and that's why it's become very, very popular and more common throughout the area. But yes, as, as the Commissioner Casello indicated, it is highly, high-maintenance, and it does require daily grooming. But that's what makes it, among other reasons, very, very popular, especially down here, because it's, it's a softer surface, and it's a surface that, especially during the summer months, it's a little bit more forgiving with the heat.
Okay. You all appear before the commission and say that we need to do improvements out at the center. When was the last time we put those lights up and did the...
Yes. That was approximately four years ago, I believe, and as you remember, Commissioner, we, we had extensive damage after the hurricane, and some of those lights were due for replacement anyway, but the, the hurricane certainly accelerated that. So it was, the last bank of lights that we had to replace, the first phase of the facility was constructed in 1982. The final phase was, I believe, in the early 1990s. So ultimately, that was something that was just basically due for routine maintenance and replacement.
Okay. With the, what we've already done, what is the life expected to see now of the courts and the lights out there? How many years are we looking at?
The, the lights, I would say at least another 20, 30 years, as long as we don't have any major storms to deal with. The courts, we have to resurface a bank of four to eight courts every three to four years. And by that, I mean where we literally take all the surface off and replace it. But again, that's standard maintenance for these type of courts, and that's something that we've been dealing with since, again, the 1980s, as far as this facility.
I heard the mayor said he was going to get with the principals and see if we can get some kids to start using it. Like, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I'm, I'm not in favor, you know, pricing things out where people don't want to use them at this point. That's the way I stand, of what we invested.
Yes.
Wally, those lights, was it four years or two years ago in the tune to about $86,000? Is that correct?
I, I was a little more than that, Commissioner, and it was probably the cost was around $100,000, maybe a little more than that.
And what money do we have in capital improvement, coming out of the capital improvement budget to do? What kind of...
For the tennis center for this year?
For this year, coming out of capital...
I, I don't, nothing to that extent. I, I, I don't believe we have any major projects in the tennis.
We'll have to get that to you. I do not believe there's any in this year.
You can't get it to me, because I'll be gone after tonight.
Right.
But I, I believe was, I believe, I believe, and somebody correct me wrong, give me a call and tell me I'm wrong, I believe that was $100,000 to do something, there was some big maintenance cost that coming up this year.
$100,000 was the number for the Little League dugouts.
No, I'm talking tennis club. I know what I'm talking about here.
I don't...
Okay. We have, we have a dozen open courts now. We have one right down here at Sarah Sims Park. Has anybody approached the schools about using the Sarah Sims Park tennis courts?
And, and that's part of what the mayor and I were dealing with yesterday, whereby when you're dealing with schools and trying to do things like this off their campus, it's extremely challenging. That doesn't mean we give up.
Well, most of the kids would have to be bused to this, to this tennis club, correct?
Or they would have to come after school.
After school, correct. Where we have parks with these open tennis courts that we could utilize. I don't know how, are they heavily utilized, the open courts that you know of?
It's hard to tell. Some more than others, you know. Certainly not during the middle of the day in the summer.
My whole argument is here is we're running a private, basically a private club at the tune of $100,000 every year out of our budget, plus whatever it is maintenance costs to tune of $100,000 for new lighting, and there's another big budget item coming up, I think this, in this budget, coming out of capital improvement. So all I'm asking is that we look at and restructure the fees so that it pays for itself. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying close the tennis club or anything like that. We did it with the golf course. They restructured the fees. It's making money. It's back in the black again. That's all I ask of the tennis club. That's my argument.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. At the tennis, he says Sarah Sims. Did we have tennis courses at Sarah Sims Park?
We, we did, and, but right now, of course, it's under reconstruction. I believe we have tennis courses in the new plans.
We did have them.
Pardon me, sir?
Where did we have them at? Because I don't remember seeing any out there.
They were, they were before the playground. They, I remember seeing an old Google map from 2007. So we're talking 11 years ago.
Oh, okay. Because I know we don't have any out there now.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as I'm on the right page. I'm just saying, I'm in the right city. Okay. I'm good. Colin, excuse me, that information that he's requesting, you get that to us. I'm just saying, he'll be gone. We can use it, and we can move on.
All right. So...
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I got to keep it real.
Yep. Seeing no motion on the item, we will move on to discussion on Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals Process in the City's Land Development Regulations as Related to Onnings.
Yes, sir. We have a, a brief presentation for you based on some comments and requests of the commission at our last commission meeting. We want to have Colin take you through our ordinance related to the onnings, as well as our process for our Building Board of Adjustment and Appeal Applications.
So I'm, I'm, yeah, so I'm going to go through this, and there's a lot of technical things. So we decided, since it was Commissioner Casello's last meeting, we wouldn't do the, the really long version. We're going to try to do the short version. But anyway, so we're going to talk about two issues that came up in the last meeting that have been out. And one is, is the question about Board of Adjustment and Appeals and, and, and the timeframe that it takes to go through that and the cost. So we're going to do that first, and then we'll talk a little bit about some onning regulations and how our regulations work and, and our land use code. All right, come on. There we go. So, in the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, it's, I'm not going to go through all the chapters, but we have several sections in the code that deal with that. And basically, what, what it is, is, is if, if somebody's coming in with a building permit, again, this, this is only for building code issues. This is not for site plan. This is not for all the other things. This is for building code issues. So if somebody comes in with a building plan, the building official reviews it and makes an interpretation of the building code and asks for something and denies their permit, they have the right to appeal that. The right is fairly restricted to certain things within that code, because one of the reasons for our code is, is building code, it's standard building code across Florida that everybody follows, is because we want our buildings to stand up. And if you've noticed, and after this last hurricane, if you looked at some of the pictures, new houses that the hurricane hit directly on are still standing. Old houses fell down. And there's a reason for that. The new building code is designed, we design buildings much stronger and, and much safer than we used to. So our job is to make sure that that building code is followed by all contractors. But sometimes, there's a disagreement. And when there's a disagreement, the contractor has a right to appeal to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. It's, 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 it's a process set up by the state statutes. It's not by the city, it's set up by that. And it, it, you can appeal a building official's interpretation, because the code does have some areas that aren't black and white. So they, you can appeal a building official's interpretation of the code. You can appeal to consider an alternative. So you may have something that you think is better than the way the building code wants to do it, and you can come in and demonstrate that you have a better way of providing whatever the building code requires, different than the way the building code. Or you can, whether or not that code is actually, actually applicable to your process. So that's what these appeals are for, is for directly related to the building code. In, in the history of this, in the last three years, we've had two, and they're real simple. The first, the first one was, it was, we had deemed the building unsafe. The owners appealed that and said, "No, we think it's safe." Both arguments were heard, and the process went on. The only other one we had was, there was a permit that had expired, and the owner wanted to continue using it, so he went to the board to ask for an extension of that. And again, that's a building official interpretation, so he asked, they, that particular project asked for an extension of that permit. Okay, now I got to figure out my buttons here.
Excuse me, I need to stop you. Stop. Yeah. Go, go back there. 504 Northwest 12th Avenue. What was that onning thing was, what was it at? Own a house or what?
That was a house. It was a, yeah.
Shinkent North Building Official. That residence, sitting right behind the, the...
Cherry Hill Mart.
Thank you. The, the Cherry Hill Mart, right there. It's a two-story residence, multifamily at that location. They went through the extension process, was granted, and they actually were able to come into compliance and complete that project and receive final inspections to make it habitable again, from the conditions that it was currently in a unsafe, unsanitary condition, par two.
Thank you.
Shane, wasn't the appeal because it was slated to be demoed?
Yes, ma'am.
We were moving toward the demolition process, and that's why it ended up at the Building Board of Adjust, that's why the extension became a, a Building Board of Adjustment and Appeal conversation, because it was...
Colin?
Yes.
So just based on that last slide, is it, is it your professional opinion that this particular issue is not widespread throughout the business community or residences in the city?
Yeah. And, and the reason is, is it's real simple, is, is our job is to help people do what they want to do on their property. So most cases that come in, they're able to work through the system, and our building official works with them, which is Shane and his staff, work with them to find solutions within the building code. That's why you don't see it that often. There are some suggestions that we have that we can make this, this process work better, which I have on another slide. But you're absolutely right. That's why it's not used, because we generally find solutions in the building code that helps people. In this particular case that you heard about the last time, the, the first, the initial interpretation of the code was a certain class of building for the entire building he was talking about. The design professional came in and argued and said, "We don't think that's the right interpretation. We'd like to change it." They worked with Shane, and they worked through the system, and we were actually able to reclassify about 70% of the building to a different classification, which reduced the requirements that they were trying to not build. It didn't reduce it 100%, because some of them needed, because it was truly a life safety issue. Now, could they have appealed that other 30%? Yes, they could have. But we also, you know, built, people that are professionals in this industry, they can look at a code and they can determine whether or not, is an appeal it's worthwhile doing or is it not? Because again, our job is to present the data from what we believe the code says to make sure that building is safe. So staff will also encourage, if there's an issue where staff can't make decisions, we have an issue right now with a floodplain elevation. It's a 100-square-foot addition. We won't say where, because it's in the process, but it's 100, it's 100-square-foot addition to a house. If we follow the rules, the way it's written, and we can't change them, they have to go, that addition has to be three feet higher than the regular floor of their house. It doesn't make sense. So that's what the appeal process. It'll come in, staff will present there, this is what the code says, and then the, the, the board will make a decision what's practical in this situation. So that's what it's used for, and that's why you don't see that many, because we're able to work those out ahead of time. I, I did want to talk, because one of the complaints was the, the time it takes to, to process these. And the person who was talking about it was correct that it can take 60 days if you choose to use 60 days. But you can also do it in about two weeks if you choose to. And it really is up to the applicant. So once, a, once, once a, a permit is denied, an applicant has 30 days to make an appeal. If they make appeal the next day, and it's something fairly simple that staff can review in a couple of days, and they can get the board scheduled, because remember, this board can be scheduled, it doesn't have to be pre-noticed. It's scheduled as soon as the board can get a quorum and get together. Usually, that's within a week. Within two weeks, they'll have a decision if they can turn information around quickly. They have up to 30 days. So if they take 30 days, then the city has up to 30 days to schedule a meeting. So that's the 60 days in place. We can do it much faster than that if the applicant comes in and works with staff and staff gets it done. Now, it does depend on the complexity, because if staff needs a week to, to, to review it, it could take three weeks and not two. But it really is up to the applicant on how long that takes. So that's something that we wanted to make sure it's clear. Now, one of the suggestions, and I'm going to keep going through my slides real quick, I did want to show really the cost, because that was another issue. Our cost to process a simple one is around $285. That's our cost of all of the staff members have to be involved. And if it's more complicated, it could be up to about $1,200. So on our, we'll talk about the cost in a little bit. We're, we're really not recovering our full cost. We're just trying to recover partial cost, which is one of the directions we, we've received. As a comparison on the fees, our fees are in line with all of the, most of the cities around us that do it. 250, 250. You see Wellington's 500. They make a little bit more money than we do on it. So really, our recommendation is, is I think we have a good process. I think it works. It's not used very often, because our staff does work with people to solve problems. We recommend maintaining the fee. The fee does not recover our cost for even a simple one. So if somebody's just, like I said, this 100-square-foot addition, it's probably going to cost us $300, $350 to process. In this case, we encourage it, because we think it's the right thing to do. But one of the ideas that came out of this was, the, the resident asked, the contractor said, "Why can't we post this information?" So we're going to do a better job getting the information out. We're, we're creating a poster that's going to go right in the, on the door where, where customer, where people come in to do permits. We're going to post some things on the web. We're also going to work with our staff to make sure they know, they, they tell people that this is available when there's an issue. So if somebody says, "Why are you denying my permit? I really think this is right." Okay, here's a process you can go through and explain the process and explain the timeframes and how they can do it quickly. So that's kind of staff's recommendations on this particular issue. We feel like it's, it's a decent process. It matches what every other city does. It does meet Florida statutes. And the reason it's not used, because I, I don't believe it's a, a big issue that, that, that comes up very often. So any questions on that particular part?
Commissioner McCray, then Casello.
Thank, thank you. My take is, first of all, I, I don't like it when people that's trying to do business here in this city come before us and say, you know, "You all are not being friendly..." Thank you. My take is, first of all, I don't like it when people that's trying to do business here in this city come before us and say, you know, you all are not being friendly, you all are not being helpful, you know, and I'm glad now you all are putting things in place. And I'm just saying, you know, because I get calls talking about you all don't want to work with us, and I get tired of hearing stuff like that, and I know it's not true, sometime it is true. But I'm just saying, when they come down to commission meeting and stand up before us and state things, you know, and they have a legitimate gripe sometime. And then we look at you and say, well, what is going on? I'm just saying, if y'all have things in place, and get them in place now, my take is, use them. Okay, that's all I need to say for you guys, something in place, use them, let's be a little bit more friendly, I'm just saying.
Absolutely, and we totally agree.
People want to leave our city, go elsewhere and do business, and I don't think it's fair.
Yeah, and we totally agree, and that's an exciting thing we're doing right now, we're actually bringing some of these developers and contractors in, and sitting around a table and actually brainstorming on how we can make it better for them. And I, we had some great meetings today with them, and got some great ideas from those. So I really do think we're gonna be making some really good improvements in our processes.
I'm glad to hear that, that was gonna be one of my questions, that at least we're being proactive on this. The other thing is that if a applicant appeals to the board, and the board finds in favor of the applicant, is that, is that the final word on it?
Absolutely, that's what the permit is issued on, the board adjustment field sets the permit conditions, and that's what the permit's issued on.
Okay, so whatever the board's final decision is, that's what we act on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kets.
Two questions, one, probably stupid, but if a business owner appeals to the board and is on the board, they have to recuse themselves presumably?
Yes, I would assume so, yes.
And then, two, I'd just say with regards to this, I think that, you know, at least that little three-year snapshot shows that this is not kind of a big issue amongst the business community. Otherwise, there would be more than two complaints or two appeals in the past three calendar years. So I think that what Colin just stated, that, you know, they are engaging and willing to listen to and adjust their processes to try to accommodate, you know, diverse environments and situations, I think that's the job that they face. And that's the solution when situations come up like this. I think it sets a dangerous precedent to change codes and fees based on one individual out of 75,000 in a city. So I think as long as the staff are being proactive and taking into consideration the concerns and working within the existing system to evolve them, I don't think that we should be changing any of this. I think that it's just, you know, it's a learning process for staff, when someone presents a situation that they might not be familiar with, to listen and then be open-minded and potentially incorporate logistical changes. But I don't think we should do anything with regards to this.
Mayor?
I'll simply just, to the Commissioner Cass's comments, and just thank staff again for looking into this and then being proactive. But also just taking this, the next step forward, even though, you know, we look at the facts and we see that there really haven't been that many complaints, but still saying, okay, what can we do to improve? And I think really that that's what makes this city one of the best cities out here in Palm Beach County and in Florida. So, you know, we're gonna be putting out signs, we're gonna be making sure that the residents know how they can walk through these processes, what are the, you know, steps from A to Z of how they can do something if they disagree with the process. All of that is just, again, our staff being proactive and stepping up and stepping out above and beyond the call of their duty. So I appreciate staff for doing that, and I think we can move forward in a positive direction with this.
All right. Well, I want to appreciate what you guys do, because, you know, you are helping build the better Boynton Beach. Well, I think the reason why we had this discussion is, is what happens if it's something minor, like a color that's different or a design? Is there a way to appeal those?
So that's a different process, so that's not in the building code, colors are not in the building code, those kind of things are not building code. That actually is the next conversation we're gonna have about things, and that's really the awning issue, is how do you handle those? I have a little presentation for that also. This is strictly building code, and again, we have a building official that's trained to interpret the building code, but sometimes there's design professionals that disagree with them. And when they do, that's what this appeals board is for, is when they disagree with our professional.
I see what you're saying.
And it doesn't happen very often, because we have a great building official, so.
All right. Okay.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
All right. So the other issue is, that came up, is the flexibility we have in our LDRs. So our LDRs are very flexible, they're designed to be flexible, so designers have the ability to get what their owners want. So you just approved a couple of site plans, and if you noticed in there, there were profiles, and you approved those, and in those profiles were a lot of these design characteristics that our code requires. One of those is awnings. So those come to you as part of a site plan. So the commission actually approves all the new construction that has these issues in it through the LDR. Staff works with the designer, the designer wants a certain look or a certain way, and as long as it's compatible, and our code is written around compatibility with surrounding area. It's not written around a very objective, which is what you heard last week, last time, it's a very objective code, where it says, your building must be red, and it must have white trim, and it must have, that's an objective code. Our code is not that way, our code is very flexible, because that's the way the city has chosen to do it over many, many years. And just recently with the CRA master plan, again, it keeps that flexibility in the code. And I believe that most designers, and Bradley was here, and his others have been here, and architects appreciate that, because they can really be creative with their designs and still meet the code. So there is a bunch of, there's a bunch of chapters, and I'm not gonna go into all the technical, if you really want to hear it, Michael can do that, he can certainly cover all the technical chapters that this covers. But we have general design standards for all of our exterior in our buildings, and it comes through the site plan. If it's something after the site plan is approved for you, we do it administrative, site plan amendments. So that's administrative, and that's where this particular case came in, it was administrative, because the site plan was already approved, you'd already approved the structure and all that. And what our code says is, once that's approved administratively, we can approve changes that as long as it stays compatible with the surrounding development. So that's basically what all of these codes say. And it's really built around flexibility. So, you know, a couple of things is, our awning requirements say, basically, it's got to be proportional to the scale of the building. What does that mean? Well, it means it needs to look, it can't dictate what the building looks like, it has to match with the building. So you just saw an office building, an office slash building with art, and there were some canopies on there. And the canopies didn't draw your eye, because they were compatible with the building and sized for the building. So that's what that means. Now, that is, it is very flexible, which means there may be some disagreements between staff and owner, what they want. And we, our staff is extremely good at working with people, if they want a certain way, we will find a way to make it compatible. You heard Bradley Miller say earlier, staff made some suggestions that made the building better. We have very good planning staff that has the expertise in how these things are compatible, and they work with people to find a way to make it compatible if it's not, and still meet the needs of the developer. I get, we get extremely few complaints about this part of the code, this is one of the fewest places we get the few. We get a lot of complaints about time, it takes too long to get a permit, it takes too long to get this, that we understand, that's process. But we get very few complaints about this, because it is flexible. So the other thing is, is parents and color of canopies, and we, our code basically says, enhance and be compatible with the building with their colors. So, and I've got an example at the end of this, which is, would not be compatible. So basically, if you have, your colors of your canopies need to complement the colors of your building. You look at that at the start of it in the site plan, and that's what you look for. And I've actually been here long enough now to hear some comments from the board on some site plans, well, we don't really like that color. That's what you're charged to do at that, and then you approve it. Once you approve those colors, it's staff's job to make sure that what, if anything's being changed, it's complementary to those colors that you approve. So we're not outside of your general approval of that. So again, that's the way those standards are written. So they're flexible, allowing the creativity, and we allow corporate branding on it. In fact, the building that we're talking about that has some issues, if you go to that building, there's several different kinds of canopies on the front and back. Some of the canopies actually have corporate branding on them, that's allowed, and we allow those kind of things, again, being very flexible. But again, if you look at it, it does complement the building, the way they're set up. We do have a relief process, that's what you were asking about, Mayor, is, it's called a community design appeal, that's the relief. So you've approved many design appeals up here. People come and say, we need a community design appeal, we want to do this, your staff really wants it this way, we think that. You look at it, and you make a decision as a board, with the recommendation from the planning board, you make a decision, that will fit what the community wants, and you give that appeal, you grant that appeal, and then that's what staff follows from then on. So again.
And can that happen after the site plan is approved?
So, we, it can, if we, if that's the best way to handle it. It's very rare, it's so rare that I can't think of a time, that staff cannot, after the fact, find a solution that this customer wants. I mean, it's very rare. Even in this case, we're talking about, a solution that has already been found, and it's worked, and everybody's appeared to be satisfied with the solution. I'm not gonna say they are, not, because I'm not gonna speak for somebody, but at least on the surface, it appeared that they were satisfied. So that's why, can we do it? There is a way we can force it back through the system if that's the best process for that. So the answer is yes, but I don't, I've been here four and a half years, I've never seen it happen.
Correct.
So, and again, again, I want to talk about that administrative view. If, once the project's built and there's this standard set by the board, you've set a standard, staff can do administrative changes to that as long as it stays compatible with the standard that was set. So if the standard was set, there was awnings on the building and all that, as long as they're putting awnings up and it meets that compatibility, it's fine. There are cases, and this is a case, that the original site plan did not include awnings for seating. So they came in, so the first one came in, kind of set the model for that particular building. The second one came in, and it needs to be compatible, it doesn't have to be the same color, it doesn't have to be the same size, it has to be compatible. And I'll show you some pictures of what is compatible and what's not compatible in a second, but it has to be, and that's what that issue was, is somebody had already come in, administrated granted, the second one came in, yes, it has to be compatible. It doesn't mean it has to be exactly the same, compatible is not identical, compatible is compatible. So anyways, yeah, there we go. So these are just some, these are actual projects in there that we've gone through our process, and you can see, there's different colors, there's different shapes. This is one that has long ones, short ones, but they work together on the buildings. Here's another one where you can see they're smaller on sides, they're different colors, but they still complement the building, and they're compatible with the surrounding area. Here's another one where, again, you see on the side different kinds that are on the front, but these are all the same color, that's what the developer wanted, so they get all the same color, we didn't require different colors. This is an example, now this isn't in the city, but this is an example of Main Street as we develop urban, you can get different colors on both sides of the street, they can be different sizes and all that. But they're the same within the building, and they complement each other as you go down the street. So, and this is an example of what we're trying not to have. So this is an example where there was, there is an encode. You can put up whatever you want, at whatever height you want, with other color you want, however you want to do it. That doesn't, and you can see on this, the same building has three different kinds of awnings on it, and the same building next to each other covering the whole thing. Now, in some, in this particular case, it's not even historically significant. So there are some places that want it, our code says, we want it compatible, so that wouldn't work. So, you know, there's a couple of options we're offering, we're just recommending, we have a flexible code, we get very few complaints, again. We'd like to keep it flexible, the designers and developers that come to us want the flexibility, they don't want to see us make it very rigid. So that's the first option that we'd recommend, is just let's keep our code, if there's some tweaks, we'll make the tweaks where we need to. The second option is, you know, amend it to eliminate it, not to have any codes, but I don't think anybody, I think that's gonna create problems, because if you have no code, you get whatever anybody wants, it's not compatible. And the third one is really go to what was suggested last week, which is a very rigid, you will do an eight-foot by five-foot canopy, and it'll be either red, green, or yellow. And we don't recommend that, but if you do want us to make some changes, you did ask for some timeframes, right now with our workload, with four to 12 months where we can tweak it. And I just wanted to end up by saying, when you don't have standards, you get this kind of stuff. This is a real building, that's not too far away. So anyways, with that, I'll just open it up for questions.
All right. Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
Yeah, thank you.
Not in the city.
Colin, look, I really don't have any questions, I'm just saying, what we have, you know, I think it will work. But I'm just saying, when someone come in and they have something that's different, and might not be to your specs, I'm just saying, do you all sit down with them and say, you know, you know, without being hostile, it's the way you present things, you know. You could tell somebody go to hell or nice, where they'd be wanting to take the trip, I'm just saying, do you all, like I said, let's just sit down and this is what we can offer for your, you know, for your building, and returns awning. I don't think we need to change anything, when we get one complaint, one complaint to us, make us start thinking and saying, are we doing everything that's right? I'm not questioning what staff is doing, I'm just making sure that what we have on the books is working. I'm just saying, we have to meet individuals where they want to be met at, you know, all I'm saying is, let's meet them, you know, so that they don't have to stand before us and say, what is going on with this year? Why y'all didn't grant us this year, you know, and we could knock something out without having somebody come in here with us and complain, then that make it look better on you all, that's all I'm saying. I'm fine with the way things are going, just, you know, be more cordial, more friendly, whatever you're doing, you know, just do it a little bit better. That's the way I feel.
All right. My comment is, is that, you know, having that knowledge of how to appeal, I think, is something in the sense, because like you said, it's community design appeal, how does someone do that after the fact? The other thing is, is that, you know, having the freedom of artistic expression of the architects. You know, I know that we're having McDonald's coming up, and, you know, our staff, I'm sure, had site plan adjustments to that building. And what I'm worried about is that we don't have anything unique. And, you know, I think with what I'm seeing with, you know, the mixed use here, that we approved today on 1320 South Federal, was a Riverwalk project that we are getting a lot of similar buildings. And I just don't want to make it so that everything is similar, that we do have some, you know, not, I guess, new historic buildings, if that makes any sense. That we have the one-of-a-kind buildings, like the Conrad Pecel building that has all that stained glass. I'm sure that's not up to current code, and we wouldn't be able to have something, but, you know, having that ability to work within the code to have something unique is what I'd like to see. And also, the signs that we require, that's also part of the, do we have the community design appeal for signs as well?
That's in the signed ordinance, that's something else that's on the agenda, we're gonna be, you know, that's something we want to work on as a signed ordinance, it's in the queue to start working on.
All right, well, it's.
And again, I think that's where you could have another appeal process in that, within that signed ordinance, so.
Yeah, I'd like to.
It's a little bit different than this, but you're right, we can do that.
And so that's what I'd like to see moved up in the queue, and not to change what we have here regarding awnings. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none? Thank you so much. Moving on to new business. Proposed Resolution Number 18-152, approve and ratify the reopen and amended articles, wages, insurance, and pension of the collective bargaining agreement between SEIU, Florida Public Services Union, CTW, CLC, Blue Collar Unit, and the city. May have a motion to approve.
Amen.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye, all is opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number R18-153, approve and ratify the reopen and amended articles, wages, insurance, and pension of the collective bargaining agreement between SEIU, Florida Public Services Union, CTW, CLC, White Collar Unit, and the city.
Amen.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye, all those oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 11B, proposed Resolution Number R18-154, authorize the city manager to sign a state grant agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for an alternative reclaimed water supply project for a reimbursement amount of up to $250,000.
Amen.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye, all those oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Legal, proposed Resolution Number R18-155, approve agreement for special magistrate services and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement for special magistrate services with Carol L. Esquire to be used on an alternate basis. May have a motion to approve.
Amen.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye, all those oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Proposed Ordinance Number 18-031, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may take the privilege to have this tabled, and I'll give you my reasoning why. This was passed the last commission meeting to have this, the first reading here, it was by the slimmest of votes, three to two. What will happen, or potentially could happen, is that my seat being vacated, possibly at the second reading when it comes up, the board, it could become a two-to-two vote, and this ordinance would die, for lack of a majority vote. So I would ask that, I think this is an important ordinance for here, for transparency here in the city of Boynton Beach, and I would like it to be vetted by a full-sitting commission. So I would ask your permission, along with the rest of the commissioners, to table it until somebody has filled the seat and then bring it up for its first reading.
Comment before table.
The other alternative was that, because this is an ordinance and it requires a second reading, we could have a special meeting for this. Is that something you would want to see?
Only with a full board?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, for example, we have five Tuesdays in October. So if we have it on the last week of October, it would satisfy the 10-day requirement for a second reading.
What date would that be hypothetically?
Well, I gotta read it first, so.
Gotcha.
You know, we've got to move on forward. So there was a motion to table, and there was a second? No one seconded?
Just clarification on that point, is that, from legal, is that true, that if we were to, if this were to be approved on first reading today, that. to, if this were to be approved on first reading today, that we could subsequently, at this meeting, schedule a special meeting to have a second reading?
Yes, you could. You can always schedule a special meeting according to the charter, either the mayor can set a special meeting, or three members of the board can set a special meeting.
Okay.
All right.
But that, if you, that's depending on your availability, you don't need to vote on this to decide, to figure out if you guys are available, you can discuss that, at any, your availability now if you want to or not, that's separating apart from.
All right, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. The reason, you know, and I must say, while I'm in favor of tableing this, was because when we asked the city attorney to bring us back information, saying, are there any other cities that's doing this? Jim did not supply that information to us, you all could check the records, I'm just saying, and this is what, you know, we requested that he bring back to us, he brought back what the Commission on Ethics said, of Palm Beach County. I still want to see, is there any other cities that's doing this? Palm Beach County, we have 38. I'm just saying, is this anything that they have on their records that they're doing? And until you get that information, I'm in favor of tableing this.
Commissioner Casello, then Katz.
Point of clarification, so if we were to vote on this tonight, when would the second vote have to take place? Could it be held off until the seat is filled?
Yes, that is an option.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Katz, did you have one final comment before we begin?
Yeah, just in previous conversation, I think that whether, whether another municipality has or doesn't have this, doesn't weigh on my decision, so I'd proceed if, if there's a matter in which, you know, I would like to see this passed, so.
All right.
Hold on.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. It weighs on mine, because it was something that we asked the city attorney to do, he did not get the information, and that was when we told him what we wanted. He did not follow through, whether it weighs on yours or not, I'm just saying, we did not get all the information that was requested by some of us who wanted that information. I wanted that information. The best thing to do for this tonight, whether we could vote on it or not, is to table this until we get that information. That's where I'm standing.
So there is a motion to table?
I.
Second.
Do you want to withdraw your motion to table?
I withdraw my motion to table, with the caveat, on the second reading, that this seat will be filled.
You can't do that.
Can't do that.
There's no caveat. It's either you, withdraw your motion to table, or we're having a vote on to table.
All right, let's bring it to vote. I withdraw my motion to table.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like clarification, so something that I heard Commissioner Casello ask is, if we do first reading tonight, at any point, no time limit has to be set on when second reading has to take place?
No, you guys, you all can, you all can designate now when the second reading would take place. So, you all are, if you all are requesting that the second reading, we would, you would give us direction tonight, when the second reading would occur. So if you want the second reading to occur when there is a full board, then you can direct us to place it on the agenda when there's a full board. Like, tonight, the reason it's on the agenda tonight is because you all directed us to put it on the agenda for tonight.
All right. So, may we have a reading of ordinance number 18-031?
One moment. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part II Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two Administration, Article One in General, Section 2-15, limitation on board member advocacy and lobbying, providing for definitions, providing for a penalty for violation, providing for codification, conflict separability, and an effective date.
I guess, discussion from the board, Joe? If you'd like to begin.
Okay. Once I go then, I'll go back to my original question, is that I would ask that the second reading be held off until we have a full commission.
You're not in favor of scheduling a special meeting?
Only if there's a fifth person here.
Well, before you leave.
Well, before I, oh.
Is that's what we're asking?
Okay, okay, I misunderstood, yes, fine. Okay, I misunderstood the question, fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Clarify, you would be, you're requesting that we reconvene this entire board for just one item to be discussed?
If the majority wills it.
That's the question.
That's if the majority wills it?
Okay.
All right. So, has everyone have a chance to review the changes to this? I think, you know, after reviewing Amendment 12 of our constitutional amendments, you know, prohibiting any public official that is elected from lobbying for six years up to their leave date, it kind of moves forward. With our different advisory boards, they are appointed officials, they do have to pass the sunshine law, they are put in a position of public trust, and to being able to lobby the board that they are making a recommendation to, does not make sense to me, because then they're going, they can end up taking money, you know, they can advocate for one, for one week, and then take money and lobby the second week. And I just don't think that is a right thing for our city. Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I'm in agreement, I think it closes a loophole, I don't think that, you know, removed from the contentiousness of this, if you simply ask the average person to question, do you believe somebody should be able to, in an official capacity, advise a board and then subsequently vote to make recommendations, only to then personally benefit through monetary payment to lobby for the same entities, you know, it's just, I think it's a loophole right now that doesn't already exist, so I think that it does a service and treats, you know, the residents to an additional layer of ethics and accountability.
All right. Is there any other further comments from the board before I open it up to public? Seeing none, public comments?
David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. I find it like Commissioner Romulus, that you'd take the time to have a special meeting on this one ordinance before Commissioner Casello leaves. I'd say that's a pretty obvious move of what you're trying to do. Anyway, I have quite a statement. One doesn't have to be the brightest bulb in the tanning bed to realize what's going on here tonight. There isn't a person in this room, a staff member, or a member of this commission, that doesn't know why Mr. Casello wants this ordinance. The act of weaponizing an ordinance against one person started last year in August of 2017, over the Red Light Camera Program, and I had it on my calendar. Thank you, Judge Kavanaugh. That program had nothing to do with the planning or development, the board on which I serve as a volunteer. It is a matter of record on how vocal Mr. Casello was in his opposition to the Red Light Camera Program, and how insistent he was at the end of that meeting in demanding to have a future agenda item placed to address the issues similar to the ordinance before the commission tonight. Mr. Casello has persisted, this is not personal against me, but an attempt at transparency. Mr. Casello, let's pull back the curtain and have Toto bark a bit. It is well-known how emphatic and determined Mr. Casello worked to prevent a new police station from being built at the High Ridge Site. He was quite indignant and persisted on what could be placed there instead, and he knew of an interested party. He voted no on any and all motions concerning that site for the police station. Interestingly, I've been able to, I have been able to find anywhere that Mr. Casello disclosed he received thousands of dollars in campaign contributions from the entity and their representatives wanting to acquire the High Ridge Site. Campaign reports reflect an approximate total of $9,000 over time. Not very transparent, Mr. Casello, not at all. Next came 211 East Ocean Avenue Project. I was engaged by the applicant to assist. Mr. Casello worked himself into what my people call a real conniption fit. He got all worked up because he questioned why I didn't speak to him about the issue. Why would I? It was quite obvious his position was mired in concrete. Funny though, it didn't bother him that I never spoke to him about the High Ridge Site. Why would I have? He was completely on board with what I was attempting to accomplish. Hypocrisy is so informative. I would like to address comments made on the record by Commissioner Justin Katz at the August 7, 2018 commission meeting. On page 20 of the minutes, his statement is as follows.
Excuse me, but, you know, we're not going back into the history of this, we're more or less asking about the ordinance. Is there, you know, we already know what's stated, that's part of the record, is there anything about the ordinance that you'd like to discuss?
I find it interesting that you want to cut me off, why don't you just let me finish in a few minutes?
I would actually like to hear, I don't remember what I said one year, two months ago.
On page 20 of the minutes, his statement is as follows. When this was brought up a year ago, the issue was unrelated to any lobbyist on an advisory board. In recent months, the issues which have been lobbied are directly related and voted on by the advisory board. While this isn't a Q&amp;A discussion, if the commissioner would factually reference what issue he is referring to now, or after I'm done speaking, I would appreciate it. If an item existed, and I was the lobbyist, and it came before the board I serve on, I would have been required to recuse myself, and have filed the proper disclosure with the city clerk before the meeting in question. Commissioner Katz, you went on to say it as, as it also was reflected in the minutes. If the issue is the votes being taken or recommendation have some financial implication, such as from the planning and development, and I wonder why the selective mention of that particular board, as opposed to other boards, you go on to say, the key terms, which was the optics if something was voted on from an advisory board, and recommendation was made to the commission, and members of the advisory board get paid to lobby, this commission, it does not look well. Commissioner Katz, I totally agree with that statement, and it would be highly improper if done. I believe the Palm Beach County ordinance addresses that, and if it doesn't, I'm sure an ethics complaint would be a reasonable remedy, and that would be adjudicated properly. So I ask, what's the concern? What's the fire to be put out? You're creating a false narrative about possible optics, when all legal requirements are already in place because of the existing Palm Beach County lobbying ordinance, which has covered the city of Boynton Beach since 2010. Earlier tonight, Commissioner Katz stepped down to speak about, and on behalf of the school board tax. He did this as the CTA president of Palm Beach, of Palm Beach County. He spoke, in my opinion, on behalf of students and teachers, nothing wrong with that. The teachers' union is his employer, and it is his job to lobby on behalf of the teachers' union's concerns. Commissioner Katz's desire to seek support from the Boynton Commission, either by comment or resolution, is reasonable.
Did I request this board take any action regarding that, or did I make a presentation providing information?
Why don't you let me finish, and you'll have the floor for hours after I'm done.
I assume that was your answer.
What does not look well is that your relationship with members of this commission might influence their views, and their positive response towards your cause, as well as you're serving another term as CTA president. No matter the outcome, it is paid lobbying, you're doing the job you're being paid to do. Statistics are a good judge of legislation. The Palm Beach County Lobbying Ordinance, as written, covers thousands of people over a wide spectrum of involvement, that has served the city of Boynton Beach since 2010. The ordinance before you covers a possible 75 to 100 citizen volunteers who serve on various advisory boards. There is only one person who's ever registered as a lobbyist, as far back as I could locate, unless there are unpublished records, and that's me. So for anyone to say this is not personal towards me, I award you five Pinocchios. I ask that a majority of this commission vote against a needless layer of legislation, and not get caught in the undertow of one commissioner's year-long grudge against me. Thank you. Mr. Katz, I'd just like to say, I thank you for your service on the P&amp;D Board, I think you do a great job, and I'd also like to thank you for all your past support.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I hate going after Mr. Katz, because I'm just not that eloquent. I just want to remind you, I see the point in this, and I understand why you're doing this, I just would remind you that the Palm Beach County Board of Ethics does have this covered, and this is just a layer of redundancy, and what I've expressed time and again, is, you know, if you decide to move forward with this, which, you know, you're going to do what you're going to do, remember, you have a lot of board members, and this could cause a lot of issues, and who's going to serve on your boards if they are too afraid to go and talk to a commissioner, or their mayor, or vice mayor about anything, because they're afraid of stepping over a line? And that has been my big concern from day one, is I'm not a paid lobbyist, nor do I want to be a paid lobbyist, but, you know, I think your board members need to, you need to make sure your board members feel comfortable coming and speaking, because, you know, this hinders freedom of speech, and that's another whole issue. But again, I would do remind you that this is covered under the Palm Beach County Board of Ethics. I, myself, regularly have to recuse myself from things. You all spoke on something earlier tonight, that I had to recuse myself on P&amp;D, we're all very good about stepping back, a lot of us have had to step back over, you know, the year I've been on there, and all the time I've gone to see them for other meetings, and, you know, I think there's a practice in place, I think we use it, I think we follow the rules, and I, I'm afraid of excessive amounts of governmental interference, although I do understand the point behind it. I do think this is a needless waste of, or not waste, a needless layer of bureaucracy, to quote my dad's favorite word, and that it's not really needed, because it's already covered by the Palm Beach County Board of Ethics. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'll address everything that was said. First and foremost, with regards to my presentation on the tax tonight, as I stated, I explicitly went out of my way not to request the board take a position on the resolution, for the exact reason that I support this ordinance, which it would be uncouth if I had come up here and said, let's vote on something that I'm advocating for in another capacity. So if you recall back to the presentation at the beginning of this meeting, at no point did I ask a single person up here to take a position, at no point did I ask a resolution be put forward, and no vote was taken. I received no money to make that presentation, I'm a teacher, and I support teachers, and even if I wasn't a teacher, I support public education, but the bottom line is, the false equivalent here is absurd. Someone who gets paid to come in here and advocate for a position, and then a vote is taken, is different from an informational presentation. So that's one, on a personal note. Two, with regards to the comments that you referenced from last year, they sounded exactly as I presented them, in the past, and again, as I stated in the previous meeting when we talked about this, this is not about a person, it's about an activity, it's about an unethical activity that's enabled by a loophole that the Ethics Board does not cover, where you can literally become a lobbyist the day after you vote and make a recommendation, and then come lobby this board. So it's a matter of timing and semantics that the Ethics Board does not cover what this ordinance would. This does not create redundancy, it completes a loophole that exists. I did state last year, in recalling the minutes that you quoted, thank you for jogging my memory, that when you did become a lobbyist for the Red Light Camera Company, that I saw no problem with that, because P&amp;D does not vote on red light cameras, and therefore I did not see a conflict. I don't have any problem with someone being a registered lobbyist and advocating to this board, if it is not germane to any of the activities on the advisory board that they serve. With that being said, subsequent to the Red Light Camera lobbying job, you did secure two jobs as a paid lobbyist for two different development parcels, which you did vote on and advocate for from the position of the board, and then subsequently become a paid lobbyist. To my, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a matter of public record, but, yeah, you're, I agree with 100% what you said. If someone on the Arts Board lobbies for a piece of development, that's different from someone on the Arts Board being paid by an artist to make a recommendation for that artist to get business in the city. So I agree with 100% what you said with regards to my comments, and I think they only further prove my point. You can't vote and recommend something to this board, and then a day later become a registered lobbyist and get paid to push that position forward. It creates, as I said, and you quoted me at, an optic situation that just looks uncouth. The only reason it is already illegal is because of the timing. If you registered as a lobbyist prior to the vote on a board, you would be in violation of the county ethics law. If you register after the vote, somehow you are not in violation. This ordinance closes a loophole, and I'll restate what I said, because I mean this, this is not personal, even though you made it a personal attack when you questioned my support of school security, this isn't about you, this is about an action. Before any law has ever been created in the history of mankind, somebody had to do something that made people think, that's not right, and then the law was created. You don't create laws and rules if nobody has done something that you think violates a standard that should exist. So, you know, I'm in agreement with a lot of what you said, and I support this ordinance as such, I'm surprised you oppose this ordinance, we seem to be on the same page.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none?
Mayor, if I could.
No.
If I could, if you could do something on the case?
I'm sorry.[1797.33] I'm sorry. There's a second reading, and you'll have another opportunity.
I would like to hear what Mr. Katz has to say, especially because I'm...
I would like to hear...
Excuse me, but I am controlling this meeting, and so, public comments was closed. There was an accusation, I agree, and he can talk to you about that afterwards. This is the first reading, and not the second reading.
Motion to open public comments.
I second that motion.
I'll support it.
Okay. There we go.
At 67 Bibwood Lane. Correct me if I'm wrong, you intimated that I was hired by two subsequent companies after the red light cameras, and those came before my board, and then I lobbied for them to the commission.
At some point in time, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you voted, or would have intended to vote on the properties, if you're referring to the Hyridge site.
Right.
I guess that's hypothetical, because it's my understanding you were a paid lobbyist with regards to the people in charge of trying to acquire that site.
Right.
So...
Which was, which was before the vote at my board, which I supported the Hyridge site going to the PD. Okay? Now, where was the second one? Because what you said did not happen. Now, the second one was the Shovel Ready Project.
You're familiar with it.
Yes, never came before my board, and if it had come before my board, that's where the Palm Beach County ordinance comes in, I would have to recuse myself. It never came before my board, where we voted on it, or I voted on it, and then come before this commission. Never happened. But that's what you said.
That's what I believe, if I'm incorrect.
But that's not what happened.
If I'm incorrect...
You are incorrect.
Well, let's, let's go look at the records, but I still don't believe...
What's the record? Did it ever come before my board?
I'm pretty sure that in...
It did not.
I'm, you can prove otherwise, but I believe that we made votes with regards to awarding that property, and that you've been on P and D for how many years?
Okay, you made votes to award the property, but, but it never, nothing concerning that came before my board, either as a member or as the chair, ever. And if it had, I would have to recuse myself.
I think this proves my point that we're arguing...
Will you admit that you were wrong in saying what you said?
I believe I'm right, until I see evidence otherwise.
God help us, please.
I'm conceding to you that if there's incorrect information, I'll correct it. I think, again, your position here proves the need for this ordinance. You stated in the original discussion about this, if you had to choose between one or the other, you would choose one. And I think that that's the ethical position to take. I think that it, it's a matter of semantics and loopholes that allow people to advocate for something on a board, and then vote on it later, or have voted on it in the past, and it leads to these situations. Again, the red light camera was, was not germane, but it's not proper for someone to advise this commission, make votes and recommendations to this commission, and then subsequently get paid to then lobby and reinforce those positions. Again, I know that there's no way to avoid this being personal to you, but I do believe it is simply a loophole that no one should be allowed to walk through, and I don't understand how, how it could be opposed, when it's clear that it's a matter of timing. Someone could vote on something, get hired as a lobbyist the next day under the current situation, and then be paid to advocate for it. And again, if I'm incorrect, I will concede that, at the point in time that it's proven to me that I'm incorrect. But as it stands right now, it's, it's my understanding that you did get paid to lobby in two certain situations, where it was clear that that payment could alter, or could have been guided by previous decisions. It's a loophole in an action that I simply don't believe should exist.
Vice Mayor.
I believe accusations at all should be substantiated with proof, Commissioner Katz. If you're insinuating these things, I think that there should be, and I believe I asked that question when this ordinance, or this discussion first came up, where instances that this has happened, I've yet to see that. And since, again, you're insinuating these accusations at Mr. Katz, I believe it's your responsibility also to bring that fact before us, and maybe that's something you can do in second reading if we're going to have it for this ordinance. My personal opinion on this is, again, I do agree with Ms. Susan Oyer, that this is a redundancy, this isn't necessary. But what I would ask, since it seems that there may be a slight majority here for this ordinance, I would ask that we actually strike the term "advocate," because I think really what these individuals up here who support this ordinance are really pushing for is the paid portion of this, the lobbyist portion of this. And I think to basically put an aside to what Ms. Oyer has commented on, it shouldn't be, this, this ordinance shouldn't cause fear in people to now be afraid to approach their commissioners, or their mayor, to speak to something, whether or not it may come before their board, simply because maybe they're just concerned, or they're a resident of our city, regardless of the role that they've taken on as a volunteer to sit on our board, I think they should be able to advocate and just talk about something to us, perhaps that is a matter of concern to them, whether or not it's regarding their board. If they're lobbying and they're getting paid for it, that's one thing, but simply to just talk to a commissioner, or an elected official here, and advocate about something that they support or oppose, should not be, should not be against the law, I think, personally. So that would be the only amendment that I would make to this, to this ordinance, if it has to pass.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. When we had the Commission on Ethics for the four hours, that's three commissioners, two commissioners, and the mayor sitting up here, we attended that, and I'm just saying, this is a redundancy. This is what the Commission on Ethics for Palm Beach County handles. If you have a grievance, this is what you apply it to. We sat up there for four hours, and we heard the same thing over and over and over again. And this is what I'm saying, this is redundancy.
Any further comments from the board? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would ask that the person making the motion please add, or remove the "advocate" from the, or be willing to actually entertain that amendment to the motion, because I don't think "advocate" is something wrong. I don't think there's anything wrong with advocating for something or against something, especially if you're not getting paid for it.
So you're talking about Section 215 of the ordinance. It says, "D, a city board may not advocate privately or publicly." Would you want that to, language to be changed? A city board may not lobby privately or publicly?
Correct, because lobbying implies that you are, there is compensation for the action, there is some type of payment being done in lieu of this, this stance that you've taken. But if you're simply advocating for something, it simply just means that you have a position one way or another, and it is okay. I believe that that is our First Amendment right, as Ms. Oyer said, to speak for or against something, especially if we're not getting any compensation for it. I don't think we should ban that in our ordinance, that we talked about flexibility earlier in our LDRs, we should also have flexibility in this.
Question to you. Chuck, is this, would this, when somebody who's on a board and advocates to us, is that anything to do with the sunshine? Would that fall under the sunshine law?
For a different board.
For a different board, so that's not, that's not a sunshine law issue.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, to the attorney, again, my intent in this is to not allow people who are paid, not advocate, paid whatever, whatever you want to call them, if someone's paid to come before this board, and they serve on an advisory board, so is, based on the language of this ordinance, does it need to be cleaned up? Because right now, it's being inclinated that someone can't advocate for a position if they're, even if they're not being compensated. My understanding was that this exclusively referred to anyone who's received monetary or economic considerations. This doesn't prohibit someone from talking, it just prohibits you from being paid to then talk.
Technically, it does.
I will read, and I quote, "A city board member may not advocate privately or publicly with a city staff member." Go ahead, sorry.
There's, I did not write the ordinance, I understand the ordinance was written at the direction or of the board. There's two sections, so Section D, which Commissioner, which Vice Mayor Romulus is referring to, is the section that discusses advocating. And then there's subsection G, which is the section that prohibits lobbying. So the subsection G is the one that refers to compensation, and then subsection D is the one that refers to the simple advocating. So that's the distinction between the two.
As it had been explained to me, I was under the impression that this was exclusively individuals who are registered lobbyists, so I have no problem cleaning up the language, because that's how it was described to me, that this prohibited paid lobbying by advisory board members. It's not my intent to prevent people from speaking their mind, who aren't being paid to do so. So if that language needs to be cleaned up, I have no problem supporting that. But, again, the intent, as I've stated numerous times before, is that I don't think someone should be paid and financially compensated who makes recommendations on a board. I don't want to prohibit speaking on an issue, just being paid after you voted, or when you might take a vote that'll impact your ultimate decision.
I'd like to make a motion that we strike subsection D from this ordinance.
All right, so, we already have a motion pending.
Pending.
And then, so the maker of the motion would have to agree to amend their motion to either incorporate Vice Mayor Romulus's request, or Commissioner Katz's request, to modify the ordinance at the commission's direction between first and second reading.
Could you please read D out loud, please?
So, currently, paragraph D says, "A city board member may not advocate privately or publicly with a city staff member, member of the city administration, member of the city commission, or the commission as a whole, a CRA staff member, a member of the community redevelopment board, or the CRA board as a whole, for or against the interest of an individual, partnership, corporation, or other business entity which has an application, request, or any other matter pending for review or approval with the city, when the matter has come before the board on which the board member sits, or it is reasonably foreseeable that the matter will come before the board." So it is saying that that board member cannot advocate on a matter that is before...
Representing somebody else.
Right.
Representing another interest, I think, is the difference, versus, if you have an opinion as an advisory board member, that you want to come talk to the commission about, you should be able to do that.
Right. But this is, but this is, this paragraph is referring to the, a matter that's coming bef, the board member can't advocate about a matter that's on its own board.
Okay, so let me give you a scenario. Let's say a piece of art's coming in, okay, and this board member wants this artist to install this art, or have the...
Right.
Could that board member come to us and say, "Hey, look at, okay, that's, that's what we're trying to stop?"
Right, that's what paragraph D says.
Okay, very good.
So, the maker of the motion, did you want to change?
No, just because what we just said, because if we eliminate that D, that paragraph D, that board member, whatever board it may, can come before us and advocate for whatever, in this case, artists that they wanted. Is that correct? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Do, is there a second? Justin, did you second it?
Commissioner Katz already seconded the motion.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any further discussion from the board?
But again, just to be clear, as it was explained to me, all of the provisions of this prohibit people from personal financial gain related to their lobbying or advocacy. This doesn't, this does or does not prohibit somebody just from expressing an opinion with no financial attachment from an advisory board.
Paragraph D does, as it relates to the specific board that the person is on. So they can, they can, they can advocate for a different, for other matters, like, like he's talking about the art board, keep it with the art board, right? So if they, if they have something that they want to talk about, about a zoning regulation, they can advocate about that, they just can't advocate about a painting, or about an artist that they want, because they're sitting on that same board.
So I'd, I'd request the maker of the motion amend it to have legal, this is my opinion, if there's no financial compensation or formal agreement to advocate for financial gain, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with that. And again, as it was explained to me, the language in here referred to compensated, or advocating on behalf of another entity, so...
So I'd like to, you know, the, regarding item D, this does prohibit someone who is on the losing side of a recommendation from coming forward and stating their decision on their losing side. So let's say something passes the P and D Board four to three, then that prohibits that person from coming to the, the board and making that recommendation, you know, what their reasoning behind it, unless it's in the minutes. You know, as for item D, the, that is that situation where if you're on the losing side, then you lost, and there's no way you can have your opinion held to the city commission. And that's the way it currently stands. You're trying, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're trying to say that a city member can still advocate privately or publicly, but they can, may not lobby, as in, they should not be, you know, cannot, you know, once they have the vote, they can't become a lobbyist, and if they do, they will automatically forfeit their position, regardless of whether it's that item or on any different item.
I just want to make sure that the provisions are all related to compensation. Again, it was not my intent, or it was not my belief at the time that this was explained to me, that it would blanket cover people who are not being compensated. So if the, the attorney is saying that right now there's language that prohibits non-compensated advocacy, that's not my intent, or what direction I'm trying to take this in. I'm in favor of prohibiting compensated advocacy by someone who is a lobbyist, from subsequently coming to this commission after voting, or, or taking positions, or having been in a position to take a position or influence the advisory board.
I just want to make sure that I'm answering your question clearly, though, so that you understand what I'm saying. That paragraph D is only saying that you can't advocate for things about the board that you're on. You can advocate about things on any other subject, just not about the board that you're currently serving on.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
All right, just as long, I just want to make sure that I'm not confusing you, and I'm giving you a clear answer. Vice Mayor Romulus, are you, are you, are you clear on my answer?
Oh, I'm absolutely clear. Thank you very much for clarifying. And again, I think, you know, to kind of piggyback on something that the mayor said, this comes to the, to the point of, if someone is on the losing side on P and D Board, or Arts Board, or whatever, you know, maybe they had some very good arguments as to why they voted against something. We, as a commission, you know, with, it's not all the time that we're, we're privileged enough to have the time to sit there and go through all the minutes of every single board, of every single action that was taken. So it would behoove our board to keep those boundaries open, where if someone like Ms. Oyer, or someone else would like to share their opinion with us of why they oppose something because of certain reasons, this, that, this, and that, it, that, I don't think that there is anything wrong with that, especially if there is no financial gain for just sharing that opinion. This is what I'm asking for the maker of the motion to make the amendment, and strike item D from this ordinance.
I'm in support of that request.
The maker of the motion, I would strike D from that.
And so, do we need a new second?
The second has to, well, you already said he agrees, so everyone agreed, you heard? Okay.
All right. Is there any other, does the clerk need any more information from us? Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Romulus?
No.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Mayor Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Oh.
All right. Now, the, the second question is, is that, do we, Commissioner Casello, did you want to table it until there's a full board, or would you want to see if we can schedule a special meeting before you leave on the sixth?
I would like to schedule a special meeting before the sixth.
So, seeing how today is the 16th, we need at least more than 10 days. Is the board available on the 29th, 30th, 31st, or the fifth?
I'm unavailable for all.
I'm unavailable.
I'm available on the 31st.
I'm available, 31st.
All right. I'm also available on Halloween.
Wait, I'm sorry.
So we would like to have a...
Everyone is available on which day?
The 31st.
31st.
I'd rather be with my kids, trick-or-treating.
That's cute.
It's already a trick.
It's already a trick.
Commission on Ethics.
All right.
I was just trying to make sure that Jim, that we could...
Okay, is, is there any more information you need from us?
So, um, so, are you...